For the supervisors meeting, will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tessier. President Groom.
Present. Thank you very much. Now is the time for public comment for items that is not on this meeting agenda or happen to be listed on the consent calendar, the county manager's report, or the board members' report. The first speaker is Michael Stogner.
Thank you, supervisors. My name is Michael Stogner, and most of you know of my interest in reducing prosecutorial misconduct in San Mateo County. I've been working on this for about fifteen years. I'm here today to level the playing field for a San Mateo County employee, a San Mateo County sheriff deputy of twenty-six years. His name is Juan Lopez. He's recently been charged with a lot of different crimes. Sheriff Deputy Juan Lopez's case started with a tip from the jail. So we still, at this moment, we have no idea who claimed what against him, and that was many, many months ago. That led to search warrants that were shown to Juan briefly on October 4th of this year. And I say shown briefly because they did not give him copies of them. A week later, I went to get copies for him as a victim's advocate, and I was told by the county that there are none, that they do not exist. I sent an email to Steve Wagstaff, and I sent an email to John Fenton, and all of a sudden, the search warrants do exist, but they're sealed, and I was not able to get to them. That brings us up also, on that very same day, the district attorney's office demanded that Juan Lopez surrender his California driver's license, and they told him that the DMV record showed that it was suspended. I don't think that's true. Last week, February 19th, as many as five newspapers in San Mateo County produced a story by a gentleman by the name of Scott Morris. It went to all the papers. In that article, it claims that Juan Lopez is a former deputy, and I want the public to know that Juan Lopez is a San Mateo County deputy today. Also, and I'll wrap up real quick, also, in that article, District Attorney Steve Wagstaff identifies Juan Lopez as a former deputy, and then one further quote, it says, "While running for office, Lopez and his girlfriend acting as a campaign treasurer allegedly embezzled as much as $400,000 in campaign funds." And I am here to tell you, Juan Lopez did not raise more than $250. And as soon as I called the newspapers, they all immediately took that out. So I just want you to know, I don't think we have a level playing field when our district attorney is making press statements and press comments about our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stogner. Mary Lorenas.
Good morning, supervisors, elected officials, staff, and members of the public. I'm Mary Lorenas. I'm legislative advocate and land use advocate for the San Mateo County Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider Foundation is a nonprofit environmental organization, and we are dedicated to the protection and enjoyment of the world's oceans through advocacy, conservation, and research and education. So recently, we've been involved with the project to open Martin's Beach due to the recent rulings by Judge Malik, which have been very positive, and the signing of SB 968, which was sponsored by Jerry Hill and signed by Governor Jerry Brown. The Surf Rider Foundation decided to hold a celebratory surf session at Martin's Beach. And because of Supervisor Horsley's participation and dedication to this event, we took a picture of, I wish you could see this, it's Supervisor Horsley in his suit and a surfboard. And so basically Supervisor Horsley was told, "Just bring your, we'll have a board for you, so just show up in your suit." Unfortunately, he showed up in his business suit, and so was not able to surf that day. So as a thank you to Supervisor Horsley for his continuing support towards Martin's Beach, and for really, really putting so much time and effort into the California coast, particularly the San Mateo coast, showing up late at night to different events, we really appreciate his ongoing support. So we would like to present Supervisor Horsley with this framed photograph and an extra.
Don't let them see it.
Here, pass this that way so they can.
That's great.
Oh, you get a photo out. Thank you. Really, thank you.
Too funny.
Thank you, really, thank you.
Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Valby, and County Councilman Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Please vote to implement Laura's Law now and bring hope to the family members of persons living with serious mental illness because it is a compassionate, cost-effective civil proceeding that provides treatment to those incapable of consenting to treatment due to the nature of their illness without having to endanger them, our psychiatric emergency and inpatient nurses, or law enforcement officers. Laura's Law gives them an opportunity to recover, live productive lives, and escape the revolving door of mental hospitals, jails, and the street. The anniversary of Errol Chang's death in Pacifica on March 18th takes place the day after your next meeting, and now everyone knows that Errol Chang sought treatment, and he was refused treatment because he was not sick enough. The sad truth is that I can testify, a psychiatric managing nurse told a family member of a person living with mental illness, who was incapable of consenting to treatment, that he would have to get a lot worse before he could get treatment during a mental health board meeting in Pacifica in July of 2010. The responsibility for creating the circumstances that led to Errol Chang's death and the injuries and deaths of others like him will continue to fall on San Mateo County taxpayers as long as the health system's mental wellness fascism helps perpetuate the immoral and inhumane policies and procedures that denied him and others like him the treatment that is needed to recover. Please vote to either waive the health system's land or impeach its short act civil and criminal immunities to join or join Los Angeles County, Orange County, Contra Costa County, Placer County, Mendocino County, Yolo County, Nevada County, and even San Francisco by voting to implement Laura's Law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Lynn Gurish.
Hi, my name is Wynne Gershich, and I hope that people will look up on YouTube fluoride, cancer, science, and politics. This video on YouTube is about Dr. Yamouyanis. And Dr. Yamouyanis, if you even just look his name up on YouTube, you will hear a man who actually worked for the National Cancer Institute, who did the federal studies on fluoridation, and he stopped fluoridation in Los Angeles. He and Dr. Dean Burke, if you look him up on YouTube, Yamouyanis and Dean Burke worked for the National Cancer Institute together and studied fluoridated cities for almost twenty to thirty years together. And the fact is, is what they did is they knew that it doubled breast cancer death rates, they know that this put adding fluorosilic acid, which is phosphate fertilizer waste in our drinking water, is poison. And they did everything in their power to stop this, and when they testified in front of the Congress in Washington, D.C., that there were actual federal funds done, was set aside at Patel Memorial Institute to study this. And what our government did is they still decided they wanted to put this in the water. So when we know the fact that it's got lead and arsenic in it, Jackie Spears wrote a bill in 1995, she wrote Title 22, Chapter 15, Article 4.1 of the Safe Drinking Water Act, to fluoridate the rest of the state to take away patient consent. So when you have politicians playing doctor, and they make bills to medicate you with a toxic waste product, and you have no choice. Plus the fact, no doctor would do that, and she didn't tell you what the side effects are, that it causes Alzheimer's, cancer, kidney failure, miscarriages, it lowers children's IQs. And what she based her studies on, because I actually gave her the book The Fluoride Deception, there's numerous books on this, there's one called The Case Against Fluoride: How a Hazardous Waste Product Ended Up in Our Drinking Water, How Bad Science Powerful Politics Keep It There, by Dr. Paul Connett from Fluoride Action Network. There is another book written by Yamouyanis, the man who actually did the federal studies, and is called Fluoride: The Aging Factor, but I'm putting this on public record.
Thank you, Ms. Gurish.
And I hope you all look up what I put on public record, and here is also the federal studies done on fluoride and causing cancer and doesn't prevent dental careys.
Thank you. I have a number of speaker cards for public comment discussing rent control. You can either speak under public comment, or you can speak to the item when we get to the mid-year budget in the county manager's report. So I'll leave that to you. Bonnie Doherty.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Daughtry, and I just wanted to mention, I was glad to see John Maltby mention rent stabilization in an article that was printed in the Daily Journal. And we would like to get this on the ballot in Burlingame, and realize it is done city by city, but support from the county would be great. Many workers are being forced out of the area due to rent increases. We're talking companies as small as coffee shops to employees at San Francisco International Airport, which is where I work. Many of my coworkers are forced to commute great distances because the rent increases have become too high in the city of Burlingame and in San Mateo County. I currently am paying $1,900 for a studio apartment, but with many more increases in my rent, I will also have to be transferring to a different city or commuting greater distances to keep my employment.
Thank you. Tom Linebarger.
Yes, Tom Linebarger on rent control. You all know the problem with rents. I think in the last year and a half, they've gone up forty percent countywide. That's tremendous. And you're not hearing from the renters who can't afford that because they can't afford it anywhere in the county. The new housing that's become available, one bedroom is like $26, $2800. People cannot afford that. I agree with the county manager. I think that rent control should be an aspect that has to go in, and I can tell you a couple reasons. We had a march in Redwood City, not for the county, but for the city, and what we found is, we went to one small restaurant on Broadway, the manager was crying, his wife was crying, and their employee was crying with their baby in her arms. They're losing the restaurant because they can't afford to live anywhere close enough for them to run it. This is a very small business, but this is what's happening. And if you notice around, anywhere in the county, you see signs up on all the businesses, "We need employees." An employee who works for a restaurant cannot live anywhere near here. So it not only adds, it makes the county unviable. And I think it's important that we, I concur with Maltby's recommendation, and I hope they're implemented in the county. And just as an aside, I'd like to thank Dave Pine for his comments the other day in the press about the jail and looking at other ways to solve the problem besides putting more citizens in jail. If there's other alternatives, they have a reason to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Linebarger. Martha Ortega.
Buenos dias a todos, mi nombre es Martha Ortega.
Good morning to everyone. My name is Martha Ortega. I'm at Asili, I will be translating for her.
Durante muchos años he vivido en esta ciudad maravillosa y la he visto crecer. Felicidades a todos por todo lo nuevo que están poniendo.
I have lived in this city for many years, this beautiful city, and have seen it grow and are happy about that.
Pero el problema que estamos enfrentando muchas personas es el aumento de renta.
But the problem a lot of us, our families are facing right now are high rent increases.
Yo tuve que desocupar un apartamento porque de pagar ochocientos dólares me subieron a mil ochocientos y después me pidieron que me saliera de la unidad.
I had to personally leave my apartment when my rent went up all at once from eight hundred to a thousand eight hundred, and then soon after received an eviction notice.
Es difícil explicar a nuestros hijos por qué nos tenemos que oír porque muchas veces lo único que nos dicen es injusto pero es legal.
It is difficult to explain to our children why we have to leave our home, and often when we seek help, all they tell us is, unfortunately, it's unjust but it's legal.
Es muy difícil para una persona que gana doce dólares la hora o menos poder pagar las rentas que están actualmente in Redwood City.
It is very difficult for people earning twelve dollars an hour or even less to be able to afford the rents currently in this area.
Ojalá y ustedes pudieran ayudarnos a toda la comunidad porque en realidad esto es un problema que cada día está creciendo más.
My hope is that you all can help our community because in reality, this is an increasingly growing problem.
Porque los más afectados dentro de todo esto son nuestros hijos y esos niños son el futuro de este país.
Because the ones being most affected by this problem are our children, and they are the future of this country.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Roberto Zuniga.
Yo también vengo aqui a como representante del grupo en contra de las rentas.
Good morning. I'm also here to speak about the rent increases.
También me he visto en el problema de que tuve que desocupar un apartamento porque no podía pagar después.
I was also forced to leave my home and my apartment when I could no longer afford my rent.
Estar pagando mil dólares, llegué a pagar mil ochocientos, y perdí mi trabajo por lo mismo que está pasando, por el problema económico. Ahora me veo obligado pues a rentar con otra familia y dormir en una sala.
I also lost my apartment when my rent jumped from one thousand to one thousand eight hundred all at once. Soon after that, with the economy, I also lost my job, and right now I'm being forced to live with another family, and I sleep in a living room.
Eso es todo, gracias.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuniga. Laura Marquez.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Laura Marquez, y lo siento por la redundancia acerca del control de rentas pero es nuestra necesidad que traemos ahorita.
My name, good morning, my name is Laura Marquez. Apologize for repeating, but I think this is the need we have right now in the community.
Tengo amistades en North Fair Oaks que ahorita están pasando también por lo mismo, les están aumentando mucho sus rentas. Me da mucho gusto que el county manager está abogando por el control de rentas pero también es una necesidad en todo el condado.
So I have a lot of family and friends that live in the North Fair Oaks area, and this is a huge problem there with increasing rents. I am very happy that the county manager wrote a comment in support of studying rent stabilization, and I want to recognize this is a problem all over the county.
Tenemos familias que están escogiendo entre pagar la renta o comprar las necesidades básicas para nuestros niños. Es muy difícil ya que primero tenemos que tener un hogar para ellos.
We have a lot of families being forced to choose between paying rent or having basic necessities for their children.
Tenemos familias que también han tenido que moverse hasta tan a lugares lejos pero desde allá tienen que venir a trabajar aquí. Levantan a sus niños desde las seis de la mañana, se recogen hasta las once de la noche, y esa no es vida para nuestros niños.
We have a lot of families that have been forced to move to areas far away like Stockton or Modesto, yet are commuting to work here. They have to wake their children up at 6:00 a.m., then pick them up at 11:00 p.m., and that is no life for these children.
Les agradecería mucho que tomaran cuenta en esto ya que como dijo mi compañera anteriormente, los que están sufriendo son nuestros niños, los tenemos que mover de su comunidad. Muchas gracias y espero tomar mucho en cuenta nuestro comentario.
I want, I hope and encourage that you will take steps in this matter, like my colleague said, this is, the people being most affected by this are our children, so I hope that we can work together for a solution.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Diana Reddy.
Good morning, Diana Reddy. I'm community builder with Housing Leadership Council in San Mateo County. First, I want to thank County Manager Maltby for making this recommendation about adding rent stabilization to stabilize our communities. And thank you so much, President Groom, for allowing us to make these comments during public comments. Many of us need to be elsewhere very soon, so I appreciate that so much. I just wanted to add some factoids, that with 114,000 jobs that were added to this area and only 8,000 units of housing, it's no wonder we're having this issue. The pressure is enormous, and this conversation is not happening anywhere else in the country. And so any governmental agency that wants to address this head-on, as you are thinking about doing, is to be applauded because this is really an extreme situation that requires extreme measures. And I just wanted, just a reminder, that because of state law, we, municipalities cannot adopt ordinances on properties that are newer than 1995. So that means that it has zero impact on new development. And we are not, also because of state law, we are not able to let or tell landlords how much they can charge for rent, only the percentage of the increase. And what we're experiencing now are 100% increases, and it's that percentage that we need to try and stabilize rents and so that our residents have some idea of the kind of increase they can expect. Also, this recommendation is a bold one, and we urge you to adopt this ordinance soon. Hundreds of our families have already been displaced, and hundreds more will be displaced unless we're acted on soon. Thank you so much.
Sylvia Ramirez.
Mi nombre es Sylvia Ramirez, and I am a volunteer community organizer. On my daily basis, I do a lot of one-on-ones, and I really appreciate that you having us today here, hearing our concerns. And my concern, the most concern that I had is like, I hear from some of the people that I usually talk every day from Modesto and from another cities around the area. And it takes a lot of courage for those parents to have that kind of life, they in pain while they getting their kids out of the school that they grow. And at the same time, they just have to leave their own communities that they live. As myself, I live here more than 20 years, and I see this city now a beautiful city, but at the same time, I wanted to, I wanted to encourage you guys to just put your heart and just put your commitment to work in between economics and, you know, the human, human issues that we are in first, unfortunately, seeing right now in these economic times. And many of the kids that are getting out of this community are kids that they need, they usually has to go to school, be happy at the school, come back to home, but they don't, they sometimes didn't find that home. Because parents has to work one, two, or three jobs in terms to have a decent home for them. And I think you and all society felt that this is the right thing to do, to have a equal rent control in our county. So thank you very much, and I really wanted to hear from you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Colt Reimer.
Hi, thank you for listening this morning. As a disabled veteran, I want to encourage you to pass rent stabilization. It's vitally needed, not only for the low-income community, which I strongly believe we need to help, but also for veterans. As a disabled veteran, served in Vietnam, I've spent the last thirty-some years mostly going to the hospital, trying to still keep myself. I served in government, did a good job, went to Silicon Valley, did a good job, but I need those medical services that are available at the hospitals here in the Bay Area, especially Palo Alto, which has unique skills. Many veterans who now have been on the streets for years need that care, and they can't afford the housing. We need to make sure that they can not only live here, but live near the jobs that they need to stay here. The community, small businesses, need people to work, and they're having a hard time getting them because only the wealthy seem to be able to afford anything. That's not what we went off and served for. So please respect the veterans, make sure that they can get housing, and that their families can also live here and afford to get jobs by passing rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Reimer. Daniel Saver.
My name is Daniel Saver, and I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. I'm here to encourage you to consider moving forward with the county manager's recommendation to examine rent stabilization as one of a set of policy tools that can be used in order to make this county a more equitable county for all. Just to give you a little bit of background on what I do, I'm specifically a housing attorney. My office provides free and low-cost legal services to residents throughout this county and the rest of Silicon Valley. I particularly work in the housing sector, and so day in and day out, I see the housing crisis impact on real people, on individual families. So you've heard a lot of comments of folks who have received $1,000 rent increases, $800 rent increases. I'm here to tell you that that is happening nearly every day. My office is getting calls week in and week out about this particular problem, and so I'm here to verify that it's not just a couple of stories. This is a widespread crisis that we're facing. The, I think the solutions to this prob, the problem is complex, right? There are many factors influencing this problem, and our solutions have to be similarly multifaceted. And I personally like to think of solutions in this context as being a two-pronged strategy. We need both production and we need preservation. And on the production side, we specifically need to encourage the production of affordable housing, and I commend the county for some of the great work that you have done in putting money towards the production of affordable housing. But that can't come at the expense of or be the sole strategy to address the issue. We also need to consider how do we preserve our existing residents? And rent stabilization is one of the strongest preservation strategies, and I look forward to be in a dialogue with you as you consider this issue in the form.
Thank you, Mr. Saver. Rebecca Armendez.
Good morning, board members. Madam President, excuse me, I'm a little hoarse this morning. My name's Rebecca Armendez, and I'm here representing the over 6,000 members of our union, SEIU USWW, who live and work in San Mateo County. Our members are the janitors and security officers who keep high-tech buildings, office buildings, like for Symantec in office buildings, um, like for Symantec, Intel, Apple, Facebook, Google, et cetera, LinkedIn, keep those offices clean and safe. Um, our members work hard, often in two or three jobs. If you, as I'm sure you know, they struggle to pay rent and live in this area, um, to stay as close as they can to their workplace and to where their children have grown up and gone to school. We know the harmful effects on families that living further away might have, um, not just on the, the fabric of their families, but on their budgets as well. Our working families deserve the peace of mind of a stable rent, predictable increases, and at the very least, if necessary, just cause evictions. They deserve protections from retaliation for reporting unsafe and uninhabitable conditions in the form of rent increases and harassment. Please help provide this peace of mind to our community. We support rent stabilization measures and appreciate your support for taking the steps towards such a policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Cornell?
Good morning. I'm happy to have the chance to speak. First, primarily, I want to thank John Malby for his visionary leadership in asking the county for rent stabilization. We've been looking for leadership for a long time. Um, I represent, I founded Burlingame Advocates for Renter Protections. In Burlingame, 52% of the residents are renters. However, they are not being represented adequately. We have an actual ordinance in Burlingame, Burlingame, that prevents any form of rent control or rent stabilization, any kind of renter protections at all. Three and a half years ago, I lived near the hospital in Burlingame, and I was in a senior building, or 10 units of seniors. Uh, we all received increases of $850 for me and $1,000 and more for the other seniors who lived in that building. They were all retired seniors, some in their 70s and 80s, and lived there for 15 years and more. Everyone had to move out except for one lady. It was so stressful, I can't even tell you, trying to find homes for these people. Two of my best friends from there have since died, one within six months of having to move, and I lay, lay it at the feet of having no protections for these renters. They were so stressed out and were ashamed of not being able to afford a place to live. Once the husband died, the wife lost her social security check and could no longer afford to rent another place for herself, and she wound up dying in her son's very small home, in a bedroom of cancer. I am livid. I hear stories every day that are making me committed and a complete advocate for this. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. It's the last speaker card we have, so if there are... One more.
President Groom, members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a longtime operator of rental housing in the county, um, and throughout the Bay Area, yeah, 35-plus years in the industry. And what I want to speak about today is, is this issue of potentially rent stabilization. I'm not in favor of that. One of my concerns about that is its, its long-term negative effect on the development of more housing. If we look back historically at the patterns that we have, we run through economic cycles. And back in the dot-com boom, we had a similar thing happen, but then we had a collapse following that. Rental prices fell dramatically, and the long-term problem is we just need to develop more housing, and we have so many barriers to the development of housing. NIMBYism is one of our greatest threats to housing. You know, we constantly, you see people working hard to bring projects forward, they're fought down by neighborhood groups that don't want to see more density next to them, more density in other neighborhoods. Transit's another problem. Um, we need, we need as a society to be working very hard to allow more housing to be developed, because if we, if we impose one simple solution now like this, it's not going to get the housing we need. Our population continues to grow. I mean, if societally we agree we'll stop having babies, or we'll stop bringing jobs into the county and the area, the housing problem would go away, but we're not going to do that. We really need to look long-term and get more housing built everywhere, and more public transit to make it possible to move without congesting the freeways further and further. So I, I really encourage you to look at those types of solutions so that we can really work together to get more housing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Okay, I still have a, a number of cards for item number five, so I think we'll stop public comment now, and if you want to comment on anything else about, uh, the rent stabilization issue, you can do so on item number five. So with that, we will go to setting of the agenda.
I'll move to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is set, the consent calendar is approved. Our first item today is, uh, recognition for, uh, Sam Sara CEO David Bailey, who is retiring. Um, we want to, uh, say some words about him and, and, and give him a proclamation. Um, Mr. Bailey sir, has served over 27 years in public service, including his 10 years as Chief Executive Officer of the San Mateo County Employees Retirement Association. During that time, he has consistently provided, um, stewardship for the county's retirement plan. It has, uh, for the most part, been very, very successful. He, um, has always, his first concern has always been the county employees and those who have participated in, in this plan. He has helped the Sam Sara Board of Retirement successfully administer the retirement fund, which has more than doubled in size during his tenure, and during this, his growth was acknowledged nationally as one of the most well-run pension funds. And so, Mr. Bailey, we would love to, uh, have you come forward and, and give you just a small token of our, of our thank you.
Thank you, President Groom, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malby, and Mr. Byers, Mr. Sacco. Uh, this, this is actually quite a surprise to me, and I really appreciate it, um, but it's, uh, the whole experience here for me in San Mateo has been kind of a surprise, um, because I worked in government for about, uh, 20 years before I came down here from Oregon. Uh, my dad was a county commissioner, what they call the supervisors. He was a city councilman before that. I worked for a mayor. I worked with the Oregon Legislature for about 15 years, and, uh, I was getting pretty cynical about government before I came down here. And, uh, the first Supervisors' meeting that I came to, I realized something, something seemed different to me. And, uh, that feeling continued for a while, and then what really did it was I went to the retirement, uh, party for Mary Welch, and the leader of the largest union got up and spoke glowingly about Mary, and I thought, what kind of a bizarre world am I in? Now, this is, uh, something I've never seen before. And I think it's all about, uh, the fact that you have a very strong commitment to collaboration, and you work really hard to achieve that. And it's certainly important, uh, for a retirement system to collaborate with the employers of the system. So it's really been a successful relationship, and I think I've been very fortunate to have come down here. Um, and, and it, just to preach a little bit, but I think the collaboration is so important because, uh, the retirement system, the, the employers and the, uh, the employees themselves are really joined at the hip financially. And if you want to have decisions that are effective and beneficial for all, you're going to have to collaborate. So I think your, your commitment to that is to be respected and honored. Um, I don't want to go into all the changes that we've made together over the time I've been here since 2005, but suffice it to say, I think that we've managed through the biggest challenge, which was the recession, as well or better than any other county in California, probably better than most, uh, entities in the country. Um, a lot of them descended into discord and, uh, you know, dissension, and, uh, that hasn't happened here. And it's, uh, I think it's been much for the better, and it's much appreciated. So I want to thank you. Uh, you've been tremendous. Uh, I thank Mr. Pine specifically. He's been very active with the system, and I think we've done some great things. I want to thank John Malby. Uh, we've had a great relationship since day one, and, uh, both version one, Malby one and two have been really good. Uh, Mr. Sacco, I appreciate our relationship too, always great, very open, honest, and we've gotten some things done. Mr. Byers as well, we've collaborated. We haven't, uh, always been in agreement, but, uh, it's been worth the effort, and, uh, I really sincerely appreciate that. I want to mention Raina Fral as, as well, and Bob Adler, they've been great to work with. I want to mention our Board of Trustees. I know you don't get to see them in action much, but they're very dedicated, very professional, and very serious about their work. Um, and then finally, the staff. I inherited a great staff, and then with those staff members, we've been able to add a lot of other great staff members. They really are dedicated, uh, to serving the members and providing personal service, and I know that's going to continue, because we hired a, uh, staff member to succeed me, Scott Hood, uh, who's been with Sam Sara for 14 years. So I think I leave you in good hands, and again, thank you very much, been a privilege.
Do you want to go first? Uh, Dave, don't, don't leave the room yet. I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership and, uh, for all the seminars and educational opportunities that you provide. Um, also want to tell you that I had an occasion to go through the retirement process, uh, a couple of years ago, and, uh, but here I am. Um, in any event, uh, the process was very professional, the staff, uh, treated me very, very well, answered all my questions, and, um, I think you and I talked at that time also, because I was a little nervous, um, about making, you know, a big change, and, uh, all of you, uh, made that process, uh, much easier for me personally, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of, uh, my family and myself, and for all the people who have gone through, um, that system. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Well, I think all, all the success we've had has been as a team, and that's, that's been the greatest thing, so. By the way, I thought I'd mention, I will see you all this afternoon when I get my 10-year...
Oh, yeah.
Award. So I want three things. I want, I want the reso, I want the 10-year award, and I want my full retirement. Or, or at least two out of the three.
Okay. So, David, I too wanted to add my, my, my thanks for your tremendous service. I, I feel fortunate that our tenures were able to, uh, overlap. Uh, one of the many, um, great things about being elected official is you're always in a position to learn, uh, because you interact with so many different issues, and I had a lot to learn about pensions, it's a very complex area. You were a great, uh, great professor. Um, I benefited greatly from, uh, you know, working with you, uh, on the pension pay-down issue, and, you know, collectively, we all, um, did something that was really extraordinary in, in, in making the, uh, the, uh, the pay-down that we did, uh, and it was very fortuitous timing, and that's going to help our, our county for many, many years, and particularly when times get tough again. So thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Well, Dave, you won't be here, but I am going to test that same system in about a year and a half, so, um, and I get my 10-year today, and I want full retirement, I want the certificate, and I want a resolution, and I probably will only get one of those three, so. Anyway, but thank you for your great service, and I appreciate the fact that you said that you're leaving behind a, a well-oiled machine, as, as you will, and that's really important. You know, succession planning is something we talk about here, and it's, and I think it's really important that it really happens, and that people have had the opportunity to work with you and all work together as a team, and so I thank you for that great effort.
Just, uh, David, let's just add, I have always appreciated your dry sense of humor. Every time you come before us for your budget hearing, which you really don't have to, I guess you don't have to, but you always do, and you always have something, uh, comical to say, as you did, for example, just, just today. So, okay, so I really want to thank you for the great job that you and your staff have done over the years, and you really have made a significant difference for all of our retirees, as well as, uh, as for the county budget.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all of you, and, uh, I have to say, you mentioned our budget, that I don't have to come and even speak about it, but I, I will always remember the time I did come to speak about it, and, uh, of course, our, our board approves the budget, but I was leaving the room, not much like just now, and, and I heard, uh, all in favor say aye, budget approved, as I was walking out the door, so I thought, well, that's a bonus. We appreciate it.
Any comments from you all, any of you gentlemen?
Just to thank, uh, Dave for his years of service and to reiterate his marks, it's been a real pleasure, Dave, working with you. He's probably the most knowledgeable, um, person I have worked with on retirement systems, and as the board has alluded to, it is an extremely complex and getting more complex area every day. And just from a personal standpoint, Dave and his wife are retiring to Palm Springs, which greatly relieves me. If he was retiring to a country for which we had no extradition treaties, I would be much more worried, but Palm Springs, we could find him. Dave, good luck.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey. Thank you for everything you've done for this county and its employees.
Thank you very much. We'll see you this afternoon.
Um, let's go to item number two. Uh, the governing board of the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District will conduct a public hearing. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Malby, and Mr. Byers. Staff is recommending annexation of the lands of Bayer into the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District. The district is able to, uh, accept the property into our district. We have received all necessary approvals, and all fees either have been paid or will be paid prior to the annexation. With that, I, uh, conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Questions? Action. Yes. There any, do we have any public speaker cards? We do not. We'll close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Do we need, do we, do we need a roll call?
Uh, not technically, it's, it's your pleasure.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Item number three is acting as the governing board of the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District.
Thank you, President Groom. Uh, staff is recommending annexation of the lands of Lopez into the Oak Knoll Sewer District. The district is capable of accepting the property. We have received all approvals on the annexation, and all fees either have been paid or will be paid on that property prior to the actual annexation. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Okay, action. Close the public hearing?
Close, I'll move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I will move to, um, accept the recommendation order and the annexation of the lands of Lopez, uh, to, et cetera, et cetera.
Second? All in, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes also. Item number four. Acting as the governing board of commissioners of the housing authority of the County of San Mateo, we will conduct a public hearing. Uh, Mr. Lowell?
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malby, Sacco, and Byers. The item before you is an amendment to, uh, the Housing Authority's MTW Annual Plan. Does require a public hearing. We also gave notice and had published this according to HUD requirements. requirements a couple of months ago and received no comments. Basically, what we are asking HUD to approve is, it goes in line with some of the comments you've heard this morning, having to do with housing affordability. And for those fortunate enough to receive a housing choice voucher, commonly known as Section Eight voucher, they, as probably no surprise to anyone here, have been having tremendous problem finding and renting up one of those units. As a result, our voucher usage is decreasing, and we've been doing everything possible internally in terms of landlord outreach, increasing subsidy levels and so on, but still, it's continuing. So this plan amendment is to ask HUD to allow the Housing Authority to use up to $250,000 a year for the next three years for something that we're calling Leasing Success Program. These are housing assistance payment funds that we can't use otherwise, unfortunately. And it would pay for such things as housing locator service that could be used for some of our elderly and disabled clients, looking at more housing sharing opportunities, shared housing opportunities, creating some landlord incentives, and creating assistance for security assistance with that.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this item? Please come forward. And we'd ask you to fill out his card when you're finished.
Actually, I wasn't planning to speak on this, but I just want to say, yea, those are all really good tools that we can use. Thank you.
Don't forget to fill out a speaker's card, please. So, most to close the public hearing?
So I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Action on this item.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe a yea. Okay. Well out a yea over there. So now we'll go to item number five, which is the mid-year budget report. Mr. Malpe.
Madam President, members of the Board, I'll make some initial remarks regarding this item, and then Jim Sacco will take over from there. So any of the hard questions, please save for Jim.
Be happy to do that.
High-tech entrepreneur Alan King once said, "The best way to predict the future is to invent it." I foresee a time in this county when all of our residents are adequately housed, our children graduate from high school with the skills necessary to succeed in life, and everyone, regardless of background or occupation, shares in the prosperity that we enjoy in this area. Martin Luther King, in his famous Letter from the Birmingham Jail, once wrote, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to injustice everywhere." And while he was talking about civil rights in mid-20th century America, I feel quite sure that his remarks are applicable to the present economic situation that we see in this county and indeed across the nation. While many of us have prospered, there are still far too many who struggle to reach their American dream. The resources that our county receives as one of the wealthiest counties in the nation enables us to undertake great endeavors. I think in the next two-year budget cycle, we should begin to use those resources to lay the foundation so that everyone in this county has the opportunity not just to survive, but to thrive. With that in mind, I am proposing that by the year 2020, in San Mateo County, we achieve the following things. We end homelessness. We see that the vast majority of students in our public school system have achieved reading level by the third grade, and we ensure that every child entering the foster care system graduates from high school and completes the equivalent of two years of college. Are these ambitious goals? Of course. But great feats are accomplished by those who dare greatly. Silicon Valley is awash in fine examples of individuals who have done just that. They have invented the future, and I believe we can as well. Your Board has already begun the process of studying a living wage ordinance. I recommend that you also begin the process of studying rent stabilization. Taken together, these efforts, coupled with the goals that I've just stated, will be major steps toward building a community that works for everyone. Will these goals stretch the organization? Yes. Which is why achieving them will require the combined effort and support of all county departments, our partners, and the entire community. Many counties have neither the resources nor the mindset to set the bar this high. San Mateo County has both, which is why I believe we can succeed. President John Kennedy once said, "In a free society, if a free society cannot help the many that are poor, it cannot save the few who are rich." Our county has the resources. It has the compassion, and it has the will to ensure that prosperity is broadly shared. So I was leaving the house this morning. My wife handed me a quote. She says you like quotes. And this one's from a fellow New Englander, so Dave Pine will especially like this quote. It was in remarks made by Ted Kennedy during his eulogy for his brother in 1968. In part, Senator Kennedy said, "The future does not belong to those who are content with today, apathetic toward common problems and their fellow man alike. Rather, it will belong to those who can blend vision, reason, and courage in a personal commitment to the ideals of great enterprises in which America has always succeeded." With that, Mr. Sacco will take you through the budget.
Madam President, members of the Board, I'm going to back up the, what did I do here? Oh, yeah. I just wanted to go through the recommendations of the actual update. So today, you're to accept the FY14 County Budget Update, Midyear Update, including key budget assumptions. There's also a resolution we're asking you to adopt to appropriate $22.2 million in salaries and benefits related to the negotiated increases that were approved in October and November, accept the Prop 172 Maintenance of Efforts Certification, which is an annual requirement, and also accept the SMC Saves update. Okay. So looking at year-end fund balance projections, this is generally what we expect to see at mid-year. General Fund, and these projections are off of beginning fund balance amounts. So for the General Fund, we project to end the year about $4 million less than we started the year, and the non-General Fund, about $12 million. And much of this is really more of an exercise of the fiscal officers being ultra-conservative and projecting to spend projects down. Sometimes they do. Generally speaking, we end the year with more than we projected mid-year because we're conservative at mid-year. A couple of things talking on the negatives. The Health Services General Fund, those are primarily one-time costs for health IT and environmental health. The Health Services Other Funds is primarily the Medical Center, and that's because we're setting aside money for the Cordillares Mental Health Project, Facility Project. The Other Funds and Community Services is primarily the Road Fund. Again, this one is one where we budget projects, and generally, the department anticipates spending down those projects. So that's why you end up with less fund balance at year-end. Administration and Fiscal is basically one-time costs in the ISD Department. And then finally, Non-Departmental Services is primarily one-time cost, and I'll talk a little bit about that when we get to that section of the presentation.
Mr. Sacco, where is the Cordillares set aside?
It's, well, you see a reduction in the Health Services Other Funds of 6.9 million, and that's because the Medical Center is going to put some of their fund balance in a trust fund.
Okay. Thank you.
So as you can see, the General Fund is projected to end the year with $366 million. Depending on where the budget ends up for fiscal year 15, 16, this is somewhere in the neighborhood of 26% to 27% of the total net appropriations for that budget. And then in Non-General Fund, you see that big spike up that we had in fiscal year 2014, 15. That was the sale of Circle Star Plaza for $87 million. Again, we're projecting year-end fund balance of $231 million, which is about 42% of all Non-General Fund. If you take out the Circle Star amount, it's about 25% of the Non-General Fund budget. Then moving on to revenue projections, there is a little bit of a misstatement in my mid-year report. I think that, I think it was clarified by Mark Church yesterday at a meeting I was at. The, I think I said there would be $22 million in new office, square feet office space in the next two years. It's actually, we've been adding about $1 million square feet a year, and within four years, we expect the total amount to reach $23 million square feet in the county.
And I might add, that roughly translates into 100,000 new jobs.
And if you were on 280 heading south today, you saw what that means. So the, just on this, so on this slide here, the secured property tax with a 5% for fiscal year 16 is based on the Roll Tracker warrants. Familiar with what that is? That's an up-to-date website that shows where the county's role currently is as they're entering values and making adjustments. And it's basically a little bit over 5% right now. Now, we always kind of factor in something for appeals, but this is probably a fairly conservative growth estimate. And then the 5% in fiscal year 17, again, is based on the new office space coming online, the commercial office space. And then we go 4% in the out-years for the secured. Couple things on the FY15 figures I wanted to point out, and I think it's more of a timing issue than anything, but some of the transaction taxes are a little bit lower. So that's why you see a minus 9.4% on property transfer tax and a minus 3.6% on other revenue, which is basically supplementals. I was talking to Alex in the assessor's office, and he feels like even though the transactions are down, the values are up. So by the end of the year, we'd probably be okay in these areas, too. So anyway, if you look at this five years, we're looking at 3.5% to 3% growth over the five years. We're also looking at 3% growth for public safety sales tax and Measure A sales tax. One other point I wanted to make is that because of the negotiated salary increases this year, if you look at the fiscal year 2015 line, you'll see that XSERAF goes up 37.5%. That's the increase. I made the adjustment this year to go from $40 million to $55 million in terms of the one-time component to offset the cost of the negotiated increases. So if you look at the dollars based on those projections, you'll see that overall revenue growth is $73.4 million. I went back to last year's report and looked at the five-year revenue projection. It was $60 million. So we're heading in the right direction. So the same five years, just one year moved up as an additional $13 million in terms of the projections. Public Safety Sales Tax is projected to grow $12 million over those five years, and then Measure A, $13 million. Again, those are both based on 3% projections annually. And then the XSERAF, where you see the $62 million in FY15 and then nothing in FY20, that's because we received $118 million in XSERAF, and I'm assuming $55 million is ongoing. So we make no assumption for one-time revenue in the future. And here's the XSERAF chart. So since XSERAF began in, I think, fiscal year 2003, 2004, we've now, the General Fund has now brought in $887.4 million. And as the Board's aware, we continue to budget half ongoing. The other half is used for capital IT, debt reduction, and future cost savings. I do want to note, though, that in this year, and that this is one of the reasons why you saw the non-departmental number go down $5 million, we actually project spending about $123 million in the XSERAF this year. So we're actually going to spend more than we brought in. And just a quick synopsis of that is about $40 million was the ongoing amount we had in the budget at the beginning of the year. We had the annual pension contribution of $10 million. Countywide capital and IT, I think in the neighborhood of $34 million combined. We purchased 2,700 Milledfield Road, which was over $10 million with the settlement. Mid-year salary adjustments, which is before the Board today, of $21.9 million. The McGuire Security Project, another One of the other things we're asking the Board to approve today is the Prop 172 Maintenance of Efforts. So this is the half-cent sales tax that was approved by the voters in the early 90s, helped defray some of the costs that counties and local jurisdictions lost with the shift of revenue to schools. So every year, we go through this exercise of determining how much do we actually spend on criminal justice activities that are subject to the limit, and what is the MOE requirement. So as we go through and look at the adopted budget and take out exclusions and revenue offsets, the amount of public safety expenditures that qualify is $278.8 million. The MOE requirement, which is basically the 1992, 93 base expenditures for criminal justice plus revenue growth from 172, is $130.7 million. So we're essentially $148 million over the limit. Measure A, this is another one. It's pretty amazing. When we went to the voters back when we did, I guess it was 2012, I'm not even sure, we thought that this was going to raise $60 million a year, and then we upped it to $68 million. Well, at the end of the day last year, it brought in $76 million, and we're projecting $82 million this year. So it's like a 30% more than we anticipated. And again, if you look at the bars, starting with FY 2016 through '20, that's based on 3% growth. Okay. Couple of slides here on Prop 47. So as the Board's aware, on November 2014, the voters approved Prop 47, which makes significant changes to the state's criminal justice system. Specifically, it reduces the penalties for certain nonviolent, nonserious drug and personal crimes, reducing them from felonies to misdemeanors. What we've seen since this has passed is that, for example, as of January 19, 2015, the DEA had 914 felony cases, which I think in their realm are called wobblers, and these were reviewed under this new legislation, and 841 of them were reduced to misdemeanors, which is 92%. The law itself hasn't had a major impact on terms of the number of filings the DEA has filed, but the percentage of, much higher percentage now of misdemeanors than felonies are being filed. It has had an impact on the jail, though, and you can see the average jail population at McGuire decreased from 851 to 691 from October to December 2014, which is a 19% decrease. And you can also see on this next slide, the Women's Correctional Center decreased from 121 in October to 82 in December, a 32% decrease. So this will impact... impact, you know, to some degree, uh, as we move forward, you know, how much is the housing in, in McGuire, as well as the new jail that will open up, uh, next, next calendar year. One of the things, uh, that we've seen because of these new shorter sentences is the sheriff is exploring, with the, the shorter sentences, the use of other programming like G E D, Families and Fathers and Life Skills, to take better use of the time that the inmates are incarcerated. He's also saying, though, however, that, uh, uh, there is, um, there is a negative effect in the workers' housing unit because the folks that used to qualify for the workers' housing unit were primarily those that were in the low-level felonies, which are no longer, um, going to jail. So as a result, there are some issues with staffing the kitchen and, and other work-related duties that the inmates historically did in the jail. The other thing is that, um, because, uh, because of the shift in the inmate population, um, the sheriff believes that there's a more sophisticated clientele in the jail, and, uh, it is impacting some of the programs in that, uh, some of the, some of the, uh, inmates are, are not actively engaged in programs like choices and other things that we'd hope they would, they would participate in. One last thing on this, uh, impact is that it's also had an impact on probation since the law's inception, inception. Two hundred and two active adult clients on probation have been, have had their charges reduced from felonies to misdemeanors. Onto the governor's January budget proposal. The state's budget situation is doing very well as the NASDAQ approaches five thousand for the first time since two thousand. The, uh, the governor's spending plan for next fiscal year is a hundred and thirteen point three billion, which represents a one point four percent or a one point six billion dollar increase over the current fiscal year. He's also projecting revenues of a hundred and fourteen point six billion, which is four point five percent over the current year. And that four point five percent over the current year is already inflated by four point one billion higher than what he expected in the budget. So the current year's budget, the revenues are expected to be four billion higher than what was budgeted, and he's projecting another four point five percent next year on top of that. This bodes well for realignment. We're expecting for both ninety-one and two thousand eleven realignment, and increases six percent this year and six point seven percent, six point seven-two percent next year. There is one, a couple of negatives that I want to point out. Uh, there's the I H S S Coordinated Care Initiative. This one, um, it's in his budget, and, but there are some, uh, some concerns. There's a, uh, legislation that included two poison pills, and one of those poison pills, basically would allow for the state to end the C C I if certain fiscal and programmatic milestones are not met. If the C C I is halted, state collective bargaining would return to counties, and the M O E would revert to pre-existing thirty-five percent non-federal county share of cost. So what this is an issue is that, um, there's a couple of factors that could impact the, uh, the revenue of the fiscal milestones. Change in federal guidance that now disallows the state to levy a four percent tax on managed care organizations through June thirty, two thousand sixteen. This tax was part of the, what the, the governor had included in the reserves for this program. And also, uh, there's a much higher opt-out rate, uh, from the people, um, joining the program than, than initially expected. The original projection was a thirty-three percent opt-out rate, but the opt-out rate is much higher at sixty-nine percent. So the governor's budget projects that, um, although the state budget currently projects a general fund savings and C C I of a hundred and seventy-six point one million in fifteen, sixteen, these savings are derived primarily on the tax on managed care operations. And thus, without this revenue, the C C I would have a general fund cost of three hundred and ninety-six point eight million. If these factors are not improved, the governor warns that the C C I could cease operating effective January two thousand seventeen. So again, it's one of those things we just need to keep our eyes on, and I know Connie, uh, in our office is, is well aware of it and keeping our eyes on it. The other thing I wanted to mention about the state budget, the only other negative really, was that the, uh, the gas tax declines are twenty-three percent. And as you know, the, the gas tax is really, uh, it's not, uh, derived like a sales tax. It, uh, it, it's more of a, uh, eight percent per gallon, eight cents per gallon, I think, is what they charge or what goes into this tax. And so, um, because of, um, any number of reasons, uh, public transportation and people using hybrids and lower, uh, fuel consumption vehicles, um, they're projecting a twenty-three percent decrease in gas tax. And they are looking actively at finding other revenue sources to provide to local jurisdictions. But if they can't find any, there will be, we will see a reduction in, uh, funding for road construction and road maintenance. County facilities, there's currently a hundred and thirty-eight projects managed by D P W in the current budget. Most are on schedule, uh, there's three that are kind of lagging, uh, they're all around the energy. The one is the Strategic Energy Master Plan and the Water Conservation Project. Both are on hold pending audit findings. The water audit's important because it gives us a baseline in terms of what we can actually, um, generate in terms of savings. And then the, uh, the energy audit, uh, also does the same thing, and it's also required. We can't get the P G N A rebates without the energy audit. So both of those, uh, that, those projects are on hold pending the completion of those audits. Uh, the other, the other one is the Medical Center Solar Project, um, which is due, which has fallen behind a little bit due to complexities in integrating, uh, operation of a Cogen plant and a solar plant at the same facility. Public Works is working through it, though, but it's just a timing issue, and we think that most of those expenditures for that project will end up occurring next fiscal year. And some of the other major construction projects that the county continually is undertaking, Maple Street Correctional Center is on target, within budget, so that's going very well. I think they hope to complete most of major construction activities by November of this year. McGuire Improvement, I do want to point out, uh, something in the report. The, we, the board has just recently approved a five-million-dollar security project, and the S B ten-twenty-two, there's now, we've now learned that there are seismic requirements with that upgrade that would li- literally double the cost of that project, basically. So there's going to be a work group, uh, created to look at that project and determine, uh, you know, whether we proceed with the grant or not. So instead of, you know, I think if you remember, it was a twenty-four-million-dollar grant with a four-million-dollar match, but it looks like the seismic work would cost an additional twenty million. So instead of a twenty-four, twenty-eight-million-dollar project, we're looking at a forty-six to forty-eight-million-dollar project. Uh, the other ones are, uh, going along, I think Public Works is negotiating an agreement with, uh, H G A Architects for design-build on the Cordilleras Mental Health Facility. And, uh, Public Safety Dispatch is, got a little bit of a holdup. We're going through Sequa work at Grant Yard. The board may recall, we actually need to do work at Grant Yard so that we can move the motor pool operations there before we can start working on the dispatch center. And then there's two other major projects that are going on, so. And then S M C Saves, uh, at the end of your report, beginning on page thirty-five, there were updates on the nine initiatives. And without going through those, I would open it up if any member, members of the board have a question. I'd be glad to try to help answer any of those regarding the initiatives or anything else in my report.
Madam President, members of the board, I just want to thank Jim and the fine men and women that work in the Office of the Budget for preparing another outstanding mid-year report.
We agree. Questions?
I just have one, Jim, you, I think you have the same concern. The animal shelter, what's the timing of that? It talks about the bridging documents, and it talks about the operation.
I was going to say, Jim Porter, maybe you could step forward.
Through the President, we're currently working with our architects on the bridging documents along with the Peninsula Humane Society staff. Uh, what we're finding is that the program, the, let's say, the ultimate program, uh, will likely exceed our budget. So what's we're do, what we're doing now is going through and looking at all of the needs and desires on the facility itself, and then kind of working back into the, uh, budget that was approved by the cities. So that's about where we're at.
And do you recall that, what the amount was of the budget?
Uh, the, uh, total amount approved for the project all-in was twenty million dollars, I believe. Is it, that sounds correct.
So any target, though, of, of seventeen, sixteen, seventeen?
If we can get, uh, agreement on the bridging documents this calendar year, we should be in construction next year, next calendar year, for sure.
Thanks.
Sure.
Supervisor Pike?
Yeah, just a, a follow-up on that, on that, um, on that project. You know, it, you know, it's highly likely during the life of the project that that area will have some periodic flooding. So, uh, are you, you know, taking that, that risk into account when you're, when you design the building? So that it could, again, during its life, it'll very likely get, get flooded, not permanently, but there'll be storms, the water will flood it, the water will go back.
Uh, through the President, that's an interesting observation. I think there's two ways to look at that, either construct the project and then build protection later or raise the pad to, uh, be higher than we think sea level rise may come. I think that's going to be driven a lot by the budget, but we are keeping that in mind. Particularly, that location at Coyote Point is certainly going to be subject to inundation. But right now, it's going to be driven by the project costs that were approved by the cities. So we'll, we'll keep that in mind, uh, knowing that we have, uh, a, a set budget on that project.
Okay, thank you.
Before you let him go, I've got, uh, just a couple of questions, Jim, thanks. First off, I'd like to see a timeline on the fire station on Skylanda. I, I know you must have one. I haven't seen it, it's not in the documents here, but that, that's fine. So if you can just get that to my office, maybe we could meet about that a little later on.
Certainly.
And I know that in Pescadero, we are starting a community engagement process and actually looking at potential sites. And the other is something that I kind of harp on constantly, having to do with a Grant Yard. I, I, I think that's a great site for potential housing. And, and I hate to see us move the motor pool there, spend a lot of money moving the motor pool there. And I would recommend that we continue looking at Tower Road and seeing if we could actually accommodate the motor pool at Tower Road. The other is, and I know that one of the things, the issues that Peggy Jensen came back and let me know that part of the issue is you want to have space for like thirty cars, through, county cars someplace on the campus here. And I'd recommend that we take a look at, I know there's a lot of unused equipment in the, uh, underneath the, uh, parking structure. Couldn't that stuff be moved to Grant Corporation Yard? It's not used very often, the whole, thankfully. Couldn't that be used, uh, that potential space be the thirty units for parking county vehicles? As opposed to, you know, spending a lot of money on Grant Corporation Yard? It seems to me that, 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 uh, that should be investigated, uh, and that should be taken a look at as a potential option.
Certainly, um, I can address each of those, uh, the.
One, one thing, Mr. Porter, I think that, if, I think everybody probably has an interest in the fire station. So if you have a timeline, I think a copy to everyone would be helpful.
Uh, I can actually update, update you verbally now. According to our project managers, we should be retaining the design-build team in August of this year, and we expect to complete Sequa at the same time, so we'll be done with that at that time. We should have the bridging documents actually completed and have retained a, uh, design-build firm by the spring of, uh, next year, twenty sixteen, uh, which actually lines us up with summer construction. And we should see completion on that in late twenty seventeen. So that's the, that's the schedule on the La Honda project. With regard to Grant Yard and the motor pool, we've been talking, uh, with both the City of San Mateo and the City of Redwood City about relocating corporation yards. There's a meeting this Friday at two-thirty, I believe, with the City of San Mateo along with their consultant that master-planned their corporation yard up at Tower Road to look at Tower Road for potential co-location of a portion of the county's corporation yard along with a portion of the city's corporation yard. So there, we're working with them right now to make sure that, um, at the location that we have, we can fit in whatever needs they have along with the motor pool, because we already have a vehicle operation up there right now. Uh, Redwood City, uh, and the county have been in discussions for several years right now, looking for a joint facility. It's looking like the most likely location would be east of one-oh-one, off of Seaport in that area over there. At this point, we're waiting for the city to essentially find a developer that can make that land available to us, uh, and the, uh, and the City of Redwood City. And then the final point was on the, um, equipment that's in the basement, as well as kind of, it's kind of around the county. I know Steph and Mr. Mike Caligie, Deputy County Manager, has been working with the Sheriff's Office and O E S to find a spot to relocate that equipment. Right now, we did purchase twenty-seven hundred Middlefield not long ago. The warehouse space is about twenty thousand square feet of locked, secured area. So once, uh, South Bay Recycling vacates that area, and we expect them, I guess their lease terminates mid-March with, uh, possible week-long extensions, the likely scenario is that we relocate that larger equipment out to twenty-seven hundred Middlefield, at least on a temporary basis. Then we start to look at how we can reconfigure or move some more vehicles, some more county vehicles down below into, um, that secure parking area. Why this is so critical is because when we do the Public Safety Communications Building, and we expect that to be going in the summer, we will lose, um, all of this parking for motor pool vehicles. So right now, we expect demand on this campus, based on our usage data, to be about thirty-five cars that we need, uh, on this campus. So we need to find thirty-five spaces. And by relocating the, um, Sheriff's and O E S equipment, that will free up some spots. But we're probably going to need to look in other places for parking because we have, uh, maximized use of this property.
Well, two things. First, I, I, I'd actually like that timeline in writing on the, uh,
Do that.
Skylanda Fire Station. And the other is that, is, are we, does that mean you are looking at moving the motor pool up to Tower Road versus Grant Yard? Or you're just looking at all the potential pieces, or?
So it's, it's somewhat complicated. We actually have a vehicle service facility at, uh, Tower Road right now.
Right.
What we're looking at and what we're talking with, uh, San Mateo about is moving all of our vehicle maintenance operations up to Tower Road. So all the heavy equipment, all the patrol cars, all of the, uh, motor pool type cars would move up there. We do need to keep some presence in Redwood City, primarily for road operations. So kind of to make a long story short, what we're trying to do is anticipate, uh, relocating out of Grant Yard. So we're going to move part of the operation up to Tower Road, part over to Redwood City. We will always need a motor pool presence on this facility, or alternatively, we'll need a shuttle system. So we've got fifteen hundred people approximately on this campus, uh, that do use motor pool vehicles to get to, uh, different, um, meetings, clinics. We will need a presence here of some sort.
Well, I'd like to be kept in the loop on that.
Certainly, we, we'd be happy to, uh, keep your price on that.
Yeah, I think so.
We, we will do that, we will do that.
Can I just ask a quick question on the Grant Yard? If, for some reason, if we work through all these things, would the Grant Yard be a location for housing, or is that a dirty site?
Through the President, my understanding is that that site, although we do vehicle maintenance there, there are no true long-term contamination issues that I'm aware of. We do operate a fueling facility there, and with that always comes fears of, um, some soil contamination. However, uh, if we did leave Grant Yard, part of what we do is a site assessment to do, uh, to look at the environmental impacts of our operation. And that would obviously be remediated before any housing went into place.
Will the governor's new local control funding system to schools have an impact on E R A F? Do we know yet?
Yeah, well, um, one of the, one of the reasons E R A F went up this year was because the controller changed their reserve policy. So there was a, there was a more reserved, they used to keep two, two and a half years worth of reserves, and now they've reduced it by one year. So that, they basically said that was the primary reason for the increase of from one-ten to a hundred and eighteen million. The one thing the Controller's Office will say, though, is that if you just look at E R A F, and now, it's, it's a very complicated formula, but if you just look at E R A F itself, they will tell you that if you look at, over time, E R A F has declined thirty percent.
but if you just look at EREF itself, they will tell you that if you look at, over time, EREF has declined thirty percent because of the governor's school funding formula changes. However, because of other revenue growth, you know, and other things, the amount, thirty percent of the EREF has gone away, but that, that remaining seventy percent is more. So it's kind of a, you know, so we're losing EREF, but we're, we're still retaining a bigger chunk. So it's a, it's one of those things. But I would expect, I know, I know. You ought to see when I talk to Labor about this. But, um, I think, I think we're safe to, you know, to stick with the one-hundred-and-ten million, which we've gotten the last two years, and just keep an eye on it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have other questions? Okay, please.
Thank you. Madam President, I don't know if you want to talk about the rent stabilization.
You know what I thought we ought to do, what I thought we ought to do is finish the questions, and then go to the public comments, and then come back and have a discussion, if that's okay with everyone.
Couple of questions. Yesterday, as a result of my work on the Measure A Subcommittee, I wanted to see firsthand that industrial hotel in South San Francisco, because while I've driven by there, I never realized that was the industrial hotel. And so we, you know, went through there, and while we were in South San Francisco, we took stops at a couple of other places. You mentioned earlier that in the health, I thought you said in the health system budget, there was some money set aside which affected the balance there. But I was told yesterday, after looking at the South San Francisco Health Center there, that there was eighty thousand dollars budgeted for a remodel. Is that true or not true?
I don't know.
I think that's, that's about right.
It sounds right, but I'm not exactly sure the amount.
Just, just after looking at that facility, it seems like that amount of money might be way low. I mean, there are electric, it looks like there are electrical issues and ADA issues and a lot of things going on. And I'm not sure, just, the question is, how, how do we relook at that? How do we handle that?
Through the President, Supervisor Slocum, that's really part of a larger question about healthcare in the North County post the Daughters of Charities ownership of Seton. As you know, we had committed, committed towards Seton, a specific set of money to help offset medical costs. Those funds are no longer, or will no longer be committed to Prime, but have been reserved in Measure A for healthcare needs that may result from the acquisition of Prime in the North County. So that question, I think, is really part of a larger question. There's money been set aside. I just don't think we have the answers at this point till we talk to the community and the healthcare professionals in that area.
Okay, thank you. I understand that. Just one or two other things, Madam President. Mr. Sacco, on the property tax projections, I don't mean to put you or the assessor on the spot, but those numbers, as you mentioned, are, look like they may be pretty conservative, given the building that's going on in the county. And I'm wondering if anybody is interested in having a report from the assessor on all of that construction and what that might, may or may not do to the secured, non-secured role.
We'll schedule a director's report for the, for the assessor, and saying that Mr. Sacco's numbers are conservative is redundant.
I appreciate that. I think that's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Supervisor Pine?
You know, today's report is really, is, is an update, and, you know, it's not, you know, we're working on the budget course for the next two years. So just kind of on a global scale, you know, putting aside Measure A, which we've spent some good amount of time on, you know, our other revenue streams are very strong. And so when, when we're working with the departments and setting their budget targets, are they, you know, how much this, you know, is this exit, this new revenue is allocated to those departments, or will be, versus potentially set aside for these initiatives that you've outlined in your memo? I'm just trying to get, get, get a sense of direction for how we're looking at the strength of our other revenues.
Through, through the President, Supervisor Pine, you know, obviously, now that we have most of our ongoing labor agreements in place, we have a good understanding of what the future revenue needs are for a big section of the budget, which is driven by the cost of salaries and benefits. So taking that aside from the new revenue stream of the amount that would be left over in terms of discretionary funding, you will see some, probably not a lot, but some new general fund net county cost proposals. Much of it would be in the areas that I have identified outside of Measure A in today's mid-year report.
Okay, thank you.
Just one quick question. John, you put here three major milestones, and when we look at the Measure A, we really had sort of five milestones. And, and here, considering we're looking to 2020, and the increase in the senior population is going to be tremendous, I'm just wondering if we should sort of revisit your milestones and have something in there around the senior community, helping them live in their homes, you know, without expanding into a lot of long-term care, if we can help it, as well as the whole thing, you know, around what we were talking about with that team we're putting together?
Through, through the President, Supervisor Tissier, several thoughts on, on the milestones. One is, I tried to keep them as few as possible, because I think the, the more you have, the less concerted effort there are. With respect to the seniors in Measure A, we've already identified that, and I think you'll see several proposals, not only coming through Measure A, but also the general fund budget process that address a number of the concerns of seniors in the community. And also, the other one that we hadn't spoken to is the whole issue of sustainability of resources in our county going forward. And they too will be addressed in the general, general budget. But I specifically wanted to concentrate on a few high issues rather than, 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 than a number. You know, I, somebody, somebody said, well, you know, what about the other things that the county does? And I said, well, I think when Kennedy proposed putting a man on the moon, that the mail was still delivered the next day. So a lot of things that the county does have continued to be done, and done very well, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't totally agree with just doing those three, but only because I think we're constraining on our children, which is absolutely important, and our foster youth, but I think the growth in our community is going to be with the senior population. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not going to debate it, but I
Neither rain, nor sleet, nor snow.
Exactly. But I just, if we can do it in Measure A and accomplish it that way, it's fine. I just don't want to lose sight of that, because I think by 2020, the number of children unfortunately keeps going down, and the number of seniors keeps going up, and I want to make sure we do as much as we can in that community. So I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Malby, I just wanted to hear you clarify about the Measure A, and then the priorities versus these three priorities. It seems like, just off the top, that the priorities that we have, or that we will develop after our Subcommittee work, really ought to be aligned somehow with the budget priorities that are here. And I know number two, realizing eighty percent of the children read by grade level, is there. And I think homelessness is there. I'm not so sure about number three. But I realize you didn't want to add too many things, but could you just talk about that alignment issue and how you see that?
At the end of the day, Measure A becomes blended with the budget and the other resources the county has. So as we look at the discretionary ongoing resources of Measure A, and we've looked at four or five major areas, there is crossover between that and the priorities that I've tried to identify in the, in the mid-year report that will also include recommendations in the budget that you will see in June that will specifically concentrate on homelessness, on, and on foster care. The Big Lift is really, so far, totally a Measure A commitment, and will continue to be that. So you will see particularly Measure A and traditional county resources and homelessness and foster care efforts for youth. Big Lift will continue to be solely a Measure A at this point in time, unless, of course, the board decides otherwise.
I did a point of clarification. On, on the, your goal too, in the memo, eighty percent county children reading at grade level by the fourth grade. Aren't we, isn't essentially, isn't it, that's, that's the Big Lift goal, right? These weren't intended to be any different? Okay.
The only difference was semantics. Rather than saying the end of the third grade, we said fourth grades, but
So, yeah, so that's not, you know, that's, that's Big Lift.
Okay, let's, let's go to the public and ask for your comments on item number five, starting with Joshua Howard.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board. Excuse me. My name is Joshua Howard. I'm the Senior Vice President with the California Apartment Association. By way of background, we're the nonprofit trade association, serving the rental housing industry in the state of California, and locally with our office in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Santa Cruz Counties. As I think it's been described to you throughout your work on housing, we're in a perfect storm in Silicon Valley in Northern California. Cutbacks to Section Eight, the loss of redevelopment agencies, challenges to inclusionary zoning, coupled with massive job growth and inadequate public transportation, we've seen the demand for housing skyrocket, and the supply not keep pace. It's been stated that our region has seen over a hundred thousand new jobs be created, but housing production has lagged far behind. There's only eighteen thousand multifamily units today in the pipeline in Silicon Valley, and some economists project we need twenty-five thousand units just to keep pace with job growth and the demand for housing. The real solution is not rent control or rent stabilization, but looking long-term at true solutions that will bring back programs that provide for affordable housing, that develop and preserve housing that remains affordable. The idea of rent stabilization, which is really just a new way of saying rent control, is not going to solve the long-term issue of promoting affordable housing. The issue that we're faced with are very few rental property owners in Silicon Valley who have taken advantage of this market and been aggressive. As an association, we don't stand by those individuals who are taking advantage of their tenants and are acting in ways that are unjust. In fact, we've gone out to our members and told them that they don't want to be the person that's the poster child for rent control or rent stabilization. And if actually, and I'll leave this with your clerk and can provide more copies, have literature explaining to our members and landlords across Silicon Valley in California how to be responsible members of the community and not be the one that brings this conversation to bear. What I'd like to encourage is that you look long-term at solutions that provide for affordable housing, not policies that stall investment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Howard.
Could we ask, maybe ask a question?
Certainly, Mr. Pine.
I, I just like, you know, I think your description of the, of the dynamics of the market and the economy, and, you know, are generally accurate. But, you know, the toughest thing about this issue, of course, is there are a lot of people taking advantage of tenants. I mean, we, we've heard a lot of testimony about that. You know, people live in kind of, already kind of substandard apartments, and their rent goes up fifty percent or more overnight. I mean, that's, that, the units aren't being upgraded. I mean, I understand why the new units in Redwood City are priced the way they are. I mean, they're brand new, and there's a big market for those. But, you know, how are we going to put an end to that? I mean, it seems, it seems, it seems, you know, it's, it's, it just seems outright greedy to me.
Supervisor, thank you for the question. Let me back up and talk about the association's program for just a moment. We have a very robust network of members who know other individuals and landlords, and we've actually had some success in working with rental property owners who may not be our members, or some who are our members, and educating them on some of the practices that we don't endorse, and encouraging them to look long-term at some of the instances that their aggressive actions may bring to bear on the entire industry. It's unfortunate that one or two bad actors bring about calls for sweeping regulations. And it's our goal to identify those bad actors, educate them, and work with them to either find ways to improve the living conditions that they're offering to their residents. And we're working with some cities in San Mateo County on programs that would renovate existing housing stock. And in exchange for those funds from the city or the agency, the landlord agrees to maintain their rents at lower levels, to preserve affordability while improving quality of housing. We also have a very good program where we can engage in mediation between members and landlords to address some of the issues you just brought up. Unfortunately, what we're seeing today, as I mentioned, is a very robust economy, lack of housing supply, and some individuals who, quite frankly, are those, their behavior, we have condemned. Or condemned, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rovi Lynn Antonio?
Hi, good morning, President, and members of the board. My name is Rovi Lynn Antonio with California Apartment Association. I am the Government Affairs Director for the Tri-County Division, which covers San Mateo County. We submitted our letter stating our opposition to any study on rent control. Instead, we recommend for the county to work with us on exploring other affordable housing solutions for families in all income levels. Most importantly, I'd like to stress importance in working with your local cities, as they have been at the forefront in addressing the region's housing needs. Hundreds of hours have been spent by staff, your fellow local officials, stakeholders, planning commissioners, and other stakeholders to address the housing in both using long-term and short-term solutions. Cities, the past year, have passed numerous housing elements, precise plans, and other initiatives to deal with housing. California Apartment Association Tri-County has been a partner in all of these efforts, and we've participated also in countless workshops, study sessions, to explore programs and strategies. Let's continue this partnership. Let's continue to work together. Unfortunately, conducting a study on rent control will have the opposite effect. It will undermine the progress and the efforts that the cities, and also the county, have currently done in addressing housing affordability for the region. Furthermore, agreeing to the study can further alienate stakeholders and create an adversarial environment. Please consider the collaborative approach and open lines of communications with us and all stakeholders. We have a history of partnering with the county and the Board of Supervisors when we successfully passed the Smoking Ordinance, which we worked with county staff for about, I would say, eighteen months. And that actually created a win-win solution on both sides. We respectfully ask for you that you do not study rent control. In addition, just work with CAA, local cities, and stakeholders to explore other strategies and programs to address housing affordability for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Antonio. Supervisor Slocum has a question for you.
Thank you. I'm just curious about your comment that to undertake a study, I think you said would undermine progress in this area. Could you just talk about that for a little moment?
Yes. I mean, for the past months, actually, over a year, you know, we've been working with a lot of cities in regard to their housing element and other creative solutions to address housing affordability. Some of this have been in the creation of a potential community benefits program. So what we'd like to do is concentrate locally on those efforts. Since we've already have a stakeholder group that we've already started, where everybody's at a table, talking about the wants and the needs of the communities, and coming up with a win-win solution for everyone. Unfortunately, having something controversial such as rent control will take the focus away from that productive discussion that we've already begun, and put the focus on a divisive issue that may not be warranted right now.
Is there someone from San Mateo County at your stakeholder group?
We're working at a local level right now, but as far as San Mateo County, we are working with your local housing division, with the Housing Operations and Policy Committee. Actually, we've been doing this for close to two years now, where we're working with housing authority and other housing, San Mateo County housing providers to look at barriers to address housing affordability, and encourage more landlords to participate in rental subsidy programs.
Mr. Lowell, you're shaking your head no?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll connect. We've
Thank you, Ms. Antonio. Catherine O'Malley. Excuse me, ma'am? But you, you checked item number five? Okay. Yes, you did. Okay. Martin Fox. Is that five or what?
Good morning again, President Crewe, and members of the board. Thank you for your service to the county. The county manager proposes setting three significant goals that will concentrate the efforts of county government toward three major milestones by the year 2020 in his memorandum. The first milestone he identifies is ending homelessness in San Mateo County. That milestone reminded me of reading a letter to the editor of the San Francisco Daily Journal yesterday, written in response to an article about a point-in-time survey of people who are homeless. Los Angeles County Supervisor Michael Antonovich admonished Los Angeles County Supervisor Michael Antonovich admonished the author of the homeless survey letter for failing to acknowledge that mental illness is the primary cause of homelessness in his letter to the editor of the San Francisco Daily Journal that was published yesterday, and I agree. I also agree with him that simply housing the homeless does not end their homelessness, and in fact, without treatment, they become locked into a broken system of warehousing without healing. Treatment that addresses mental illness is vital to address the root cause of homelessness. Supervisor Antonovich goes on to point out that the 1967 Lantman-Peaches-Shard Act is an antiquated law that makes it practically impossible for judges, families, and physicians to compel severely mentally ill persons to accept treatment and medication. He says that Laura's Law is a critical first step in addressing a flawed system, and LA County's Laura's Law pilot project has shown tremendous success after just five years. And that is why full implementation of Laura's Law was unanimously approved. Please take the critical first step to address the root cause of homelessness in San Mateo County by voting to implement Laura's Law and starting to reform our broken mental health laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Kate Comfort-Harr.
Hello and good morning. I am Kate Comfort-Harr, Executive Director of Hip Housing, a nonprofit affordable housing provider here in San Mateo County, and I am really excited to be here today to express my support for Mr. Malphey's recommendation for prioritizing the next round of Measure A funding. His emphasis on affordable housing initiatives could not be more important. Finding and maintaining an affordable place to live in this county is nearly impossible. It is truly a battlefield out there. In our home-sharing program alone, we're facing a 10-to-1 ratio. That means for every one home provider, we have 10 seekers. A typical ratio for us is less than 3-to-1. The stories that are inundating my staff, heartbreaking stories of fear and displacement of hard-working, longtime San Mateo residents who are facing eviction and homelessness for the first time in their lives is truly overwhelming. It is not sustainable, and it's not fair. It's not right. Never in Hip Housing's 42-year history have we seen the kind of demand and such despair in the rental housing market. As Mr. Malphey has suggested, inventing our future and correcting injustices are really noble endeavors, and prioritizing affordable housing will help us to do these by reducing the painful impacts of the dramatic income inequality that we are experiencing in this county. A long-term strategy to bring more affordable housing online, combined with policies and practices that incentivize landlords to keep their rents reasonable, are incredibly important tools for the affordable housing struggle. But property and policy development take years, sometimes decades, to complete, and we need to do something now. Channeling Measure A funds into solid affordable housing initiatives is a great starting point, an array of hope and an otherwise bleak horizon. I feel like none of us adequately anticipated the tremendous need for housing that we face right now. Tremendous job growth, with very new little housing created, have created imbalance that we have to fix creatively. Working with the public, the private, and the nonprofit sectors together in a collaborative way, we can help to start to address this imbalance. And I really feel that working together, we will be able to create that future that we all want.
Thank you, Ms. Harr. Paul Stewart.
Oh, started. I didn't even say a word yet. President Crewe, members of the supervisors, my name is Paul Stewart. I represent Sam Car. We're here on the recommendation from the county executive that the Board of Supervisors consider rent control. No, the memo says rent stabilization. The fact of the matter is, no matter what you're told, they are the same. Anytime you put an artificial cap on the investment return of property, a pair of shoes, or the sale of a home, it is rent control, or control. We would commend the supervisors to bypass this recommendation in all due respect to the county executive. While you would want to adopt costly enforcement procedures for a specialized bureaucracy that benefits granted greatly, nonetheless, a small number of residents for the entire county is questionable. On the one hand, you have a situation where your report says you're actually doing quite well money-wise, and you're doing quite well staff-wise, because that's good. In San Francisco, the annual cost of their rent control program is $6 million. In LA, it's $8 million. In Berkeley, the last check was $5.8 million with a $115 per-unit fee charged to pay for the program. What will the county charge to pay for the program should you pursue the study? $200? $300? $500 to fund, even with the cash positiveness that you have? However, according to the UC Berkeley Center for Real Estate and Urban Development, every place that rent control has been enacted, and you enact rent control because you've done a study that says it's a swell idea, everywhere it's been enacted, there has been a decrease in property tax valuations. Decrease in valuations, and therefore, a decrease in the property tax income the county will receive. We would recommend you do not pursue this study. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Okay. I don't have any more cards on item number five, so we'll come back here and start our discussion.
Could I just ask, I don't know if Mr. Malphey would like to share any comments? I mean, you put this off consideration. I'm sure you anticipated some of these reactions.
Yeah, Madam President, members of the board. First of all, what's been proposed is a study, as has been initiated or will be initiated by the board with respect to a living wage. In my mind, a study is an invitation to have a conversation with the community. And you should invite everyone to the table, all the stakeholders, but you shouldn't limit the conversation. That should take place so that different points of view are heard and understood. This is a complex problem, one in which there are many different possible solutions. And in fact, multiple solutions are probably going to be necessary. But you don't start off by saying, "This is off the table. We're not going to talk about it." I'd also remind the board that, as you may remember, as it relates to the mobile home parks in the unincorporated community, you already have a rent stabilization ordinance that's been in effect for many years.
Just make one quick, we actually, there is going to be a study session. Supervisor Slocum and I both are actually sponsoring a study session on March 17th. There'll be a white paper from the CMO's office also on options. And, you know, when we talk about rent stabilization, it's, there is, there are, this, it's not necessarily only one tool in a toolbox. There might be some others as well. So we, I think we should start the discussion and talk about housing. And, you know, one of the reasons that we, of course, are looking at things like, you know, county property, city property, school property, and seeing if there are other kinds of options, as well as, you know, the potential for rent stabilization. The one thing that maybe is not hopeful in a sense, even if we did enact rent control, we actually can't roll back existing rent. So in some sense, that it's really unfortunate that we are not able to help those people who are really having a desperate time now. And I know both Supervisor Slocum and I were at a, I guess it was a community action agency, and we do have a housing locator there, and that housing locator is telling us that it takes, you know, that takes, there's like 15 people looking for every single unit. And the only way that she's able to actually help people get units is to actually have a cash check in hand. And it's really tough. And we end up, you know, we can also, even with InVision Shelter Network, they can get people with, or get people stabilized, get them jobs. What happens is that we end up exporting them to other counties because they are not able to find stable housing in this county. So, you know, there's a, I think, a multitude of strategies. We ought to take a look at all of them and, you know, finalize some recommendations.
Supervisor Sworsley, I'm curious about this study session that you're sponsoring, that I'm unaware.
Well, I have no idea why you're unaware of it, but it's scheduled for March the 17th. It's in the afternoon, correct?
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
But you said you were sponsoring this meeting, because I'm curious about that.
Well, I'm not sure what I should say.
Just asking. Okay. Thank you.
Both of us are, I actually asked for it.
Do you have something to say?
Just a couple of things. I mean, in the past, having been on city councils, been on the board here, I haven't been a big supporter of rent control. But the one thing I do see here, and I think John alluded to that, is you have to take a look at everything. I think some of the things that disturb me even more is that, you know, we don't have Section 8 vouchers, or enough of them. And the other part of that is, when I tried to help a young lady who was being evicted from, I shouldn't say evicted, leaving an area that she was in, I was trying to help her with some of the apartment owners in my city, in Daly City, that I knew in the past had accepted Section 8, and they don't do it anymore. So, I mean, we've got a lot of things, a lot of dynamics going on. And I don't know at the end of the day whether you want to call it rent stabilization, or you want to call it a voucher system and get more people to be able to move into these apartments and share the ability for those that can't afford the high rents. But I do think you have to look at the whole picture, you know. And if you don't, if you leave one component out of it, you're not looking at the whole picture. At the end of the day, whether we land there, I don't know, but I do think you have to look at everything. And I would like us to have everybody at the table. I think you need, you know, the existing apartment owners, you know, you need those that are having difficulty. You need to talk about the economy. I mean, you know, if the bubble bursts, we could be going backwards in the time, and then, you know, the rents will go down. So, I mean, there is a dynamic in the economy that you have to look at as well. So it isn't just looking at one side of it. You have to look at all of it. So I don't have a problem taking a look at it, but I'm not, I don't want it just to be that one factor, because I'm not sure that's going to answer, solve any problem.
Mr. Church, did you have...
I did want to respond to Supervisor Slocum's question.
Mark, this doesn't get you off the hook for a director's report on the subject.
I understand, and I'm happy to come back to give a full director's report. But I did want to provide some information in response to Supervisor Slocum's question regarding the commercial development. Indeed, the estimated commercial development over the next four years in San Mateo County, at this, at this point, is 23 million square feet. That is a huge increase over what we have typically experienced in the past, which is 1.1 million square feet a year. That will bring an additional $11 billion to the property tax rule in additional assessments, and will ultimately result in an additional $110 million in, in property taxes. This development is going to bring, as I mentioned, 100,000 jobs to the area, put increased demands on housing, and of course, there's going to be an increased demand on our workforce as well to deal with this. So I hope that answers your question, Supervisor Slocum. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Okay.
John, could you talk for a moment about the process that you would see in this study going forward? And you talked about including everybody at the table and leave no topic behind. What would that look like?
I think there's two possible ways to approach it. One would be a separate board subcommittee with appropriate staff support from, from housing. That would develop an invitation list and a timeline to set up a series of meetings. I think it needs to be county-wide, inclusive. Meetings probably need to be held throughout the county, closely coordinated with cities that are, already have some of these things in, in process. The second possibility is you might combine it with your livable wage work and do the two things together. So I think you could approach it in either way, but I definitely believe that there needs to be an ad hoc board subcommittee that drives the, the housing process.
One of the things I just wanted to get into the record for this, for that work is that, as you all recall, there were a number of apartment building fires in Redwood City and in North Fair Oaks this year, or last year and the year before. And perhaps, as part of that discussion, we can talk about, or it could be talked about, that there's some sort of an incentive program whereby, you know, those substandard unit apartment buildings can be, you know, brought up to fire safety, as one example. And then, in return, the owner would, you know, agree to, you know, it would be an incentive program, I suppose, for those landlords. I understand Redwood City has something like that, but I just am really concerned about the safety issues of a lot of those buildings in North Fair Oaks. And, and just one other quick comment, at office hours, we've heard stories about some buildings down there not having heat on for years. And so people are living in these units with no heat. I mean, that's just not right.
Madam President, if I could just add one further comment. As the board aware, is aware, both in relationship to any action the board may take in the future regarding livable wage and rent control, the board's actions really pertain only to the unincorporated area. But, given this is a topic of great interest throughout the community, again, to the extent that we are moving forward with the cities and the county in looking at this issue jointly, and maybe coming up with some joint conclusions, it would have broader impact.
I wonder if I could just comment from what Warren has said. Many, many years ago in Daly City, they had, it was like an amnesty program, where they came in and they let people fix up their buildings and some, you know, to try to get them as close to code as possible, but the whole issue is around safety. So they, if they went ahead and fixed things up, they would sign off on them. As long as, at the end of the day, it was really the safety part that was really important. It wasn't whether the ceiling was this high, or, you know, this was painted blue and not the way it should have been, you know, I mean. So, you know, it is possible to do that. You know, if we could create a program, especially in areas, as you're talking about, that really, the fact there's no heat, you know, it may not be hooked up correctly, but if they can get that fixed, then, you know, you can go ahead and sign off on it being up to, quote-unquote, "the code" for the amnesty program. So it might be something to look at.
As I've told many people, when I first came out here in '85, I thought it was very expensive. And I wish I bought every piece of property that my parents would lend me money for, or whatever. But, you know, in this last year or so, it's just gone just to a whole nother realm. And it is, you know, it is really going to fundamentally challenging everything about our county. And there's been some good descriptions of why that is. And we're not going to be able to change that. I mean, as we continue to have these unbelievably successful tech companies that generate enormous wealth, you know, there are going to be people who can buy and rent at almost any price. And we have this constrained land area. So, you know, the genie's long out of the bottle. And it's, you know, it's a problem that, but nonetheless, while we could, we could never really quite kind of solve it in its totality, I mean, the county and the 20 cities, you know, we have got to really step up here. I think the county amongst, I think the county has done particularly well to date. And I think there's enthusiasm for the county to do more. But the cities are going to have to as well, and Hart, and a lot of other people. Because there are lots of good ideas, this memo that was written by the county manager's office is excellent. It lists 10, 12, 15 things. And somehow, we have to need, we need to create a sense of urgency to make these things happen. And, you know, I agree with my colleagues on the, you know, having rent stabilization on the table. I mean, I must say that I'm skeptical of it. But the situation is so grave that I think it's okay to put on the table. I think a year ago, I wouldn't have said that, but it is so grave. Again, I'm very skeptical of it, to be honest with, with everyone publicly. I'm okay with it being, you know, being on the table. And the number-one thing is somehow, we have to kind of take the good work that we're doing and leverage that through our own investments, and somehow get the cities on board. And, you know, our colleagues in the rental industry have said some things about how they want to help. They're going to have to really help a lot, you know. Something's got to be done with these people who, you know, raise rent $800 overnight. I mean, I don't mean to shame them or what we do, but that's unacceptable. That's unacceptable. So, you know, it is a crisis, and we have to make our contribution to fix it.
Okay, let me wrap this up in by saying that I, I'm also very skeptical about rent stabilization, rent control programs. But I think that having heard what we had, what we've heard today, and the consensus of this board, is that I view this now as something similar to what the county did several years ago, the Blue Ribbon Task Force for Healthcare for All. And so I think that that's the kind of thing that we should look at. It should be much broader than just this building. The Blue Ribbon Task Force, as I recall, had representatives from every hospital, physician organizations... organizations, nurses' associations, members of city councils of various other cities besides this board, and it had staff, and it met on a regular basis, and it actually did good work. So, I think that's, what I'm hearing is the direction we should go in. So, with your concurrence, give Vice President Slocum and I a couple of days to kind of figure this out, who should, with, along with, with county manager and county council, who should be on it, who should be staffing it, and extend, put a, a list together for, for your propos, your viewing, to see who we select and move forward. With, with a series of topics also.
Can I make a suggestion? I think the thing that gets everybody's back up is when you call it rent stability.
Oh, no, we're going to have a new, we're going to have a title.
Like a housing stability, something, something that is a much broader picture. It may include some of these different things potentially, but I think by just calling it that, you raised the hackles.
Oh, no, no, didn't intend to do that. I think sort of a blue ribbon commission on housing, like we did a blue ribbon commission on health care, that met for about a year, and, and was in parallel with the, the President's Affordable Health Care Act discussions, and so it all merged together.
Supervisor Groom, with your concurrence, if you do appoint a subcommittee, I certainly would like to be on it. I serve on both HOPE and Hart as well, and have a great deal of interest in, in housing as well.
Yes, I mean, I think everybody, I think everybody here.
I understand why everybody does, and I would certainly appreciate.
Everybody has a strong interest in housing.
I would appreciate if you're going to appoint somebody, that you appoint me.
Anything else? Why don't we take about a 10-minute break? Up the previous item with Supervisor Slocum's going to make, make a motion.
I understand we have to do a, a motion, Mr. Byers, on the mid-year budget report?
Correct. There are, there are four, four actions in the rec, in the recommendation section of the memo.
And do you want me to make each one separate and vote, or do you want it all together?
I think you can go ahead and make a global motion that, to recommend, you know, to adopt recommendations A through D.
Thank you. Oh, I would make a motion then that we accept recommendations A through D in the county manager's mid-year budget update memo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Sacco.
You're welcome.
Now, also on the, on the housing issue, we are going to form a task force that will include a number of stakeholders to discuss the entire issue of housing in, in this county. And the county manager and I, and Supervisor Slocum, who is the vice president of the board, will put, spend some time getting some details of what the first agenda should look like, and who should be the, what the composition of this task force should be. And we will report back when we have some ideas ready. Do we need a motion to appoint, actually appoint that, John?
No, I think it's just your plan to sort of, you know, meet with staff and get, and ultimately go back to board with, with, with action.
That's what we'll do. Thank you all for those of you who've stayed, who have participated in that last, in that last item and its discussion. Now, we'll go to item number seven. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. We have a presentation for you, which will be loaded in one second. We're returning to your board to discuss a recommendation for limited-time restricting parking up in Broadmoor Village. Just as a refresher, the reason why we're here is because the Regional Water Quality Control Board has issued a municipal regional permit, and part of the provisions of that permit is that by 2022, there needs to be 100% trash reduction from the garbage that is entering the receiving waters. And essentially, that garbage runs through what's called MS4s, which is Municipal Stormwater Systems. The department, and this is affecting not only the county, but all 20 cities and all nine counties in the Bay Area, we were required to come up with short and long-term implementation plans that have been submitted to the board and are currently under review. What the regional board is primarily focusing on is moderate and high trash areas, and those are identified through zoning of areas, but also visual inspections. So, we came before your board about a year ago to talk about Broadmoor Village. Just to go through what to expect, what a condition is for a essentially trash-free curb is what I'm showing you here. This is condition A, which is essentially a clean street. Condition B, which is a moderate trash street, has some aspects of trash within the gutter. I know that's difficult to see, but there is trash in that area. Organic materials like leaves and branches, grass, that doesn't count, it's really the trash itself. High trash areas, which are condition C, are exemplified here. You can see the bits and pieces of debris and garbage in the curb. And the reason why this is important is because this trash finds its way into the storm drain system. Storm drain systems are directly piped into creeks and then onto the bay, and what the regional board is trying to do is to improve water quality of our creeks and the bay. So, when we left your board, when we left from the board meeting about a year ago, we were directed to go up and meet with the community and talk about, you know, what are possible solutions? And we did that. We had a community meeting close to a year ago. It was quite a lively meeting. Supervisor Tissier was in attendance. And coming out of that meeting, what we agreed to was that the community would implement a volat, a voluntary trash reduction program. Also, we took a look at modifying what we had initially proposed for no parking to try to address some of the concerns that we heard at that meeting. So, what we agreed to was to contact, several things came up, but one of the things that came up was garbage service. You know, when the garbage companies come and lift up the garbage cans, a lot of the, sometimes the garbage spills out. We did make contact with the garbage provider and explained the situation, and they were advised and directed to take steps to make sure that they minimized spillage of the garbage onto the street. At that meeting, we also advised the Broadmoor Property Owners Association of our schedule. That schedule does look at a two-hour window of no parking to allow for street sweeping. We also agreed to a voluntary car-moving program. So, we went out and we posted signs that showed when our street sweepers would be there. We didn't require enforcement, but we wanted to let people know when we would be there in hopes that they would move their cars and we could get our street sweepers onto the curb. That unfortunately was not successful. We've also installed storm drain screens and filters in some of the storm drains. What that does is help capture the trash that goes into the receiving waters. One of the issues with this area, though, and one of the issues with these trash capture devices, is that they limit capacity of those storm drain inlets. We've experienced some pretty severe storms lately, and we're very cautious about putting in too many of those trash capture devices in, in flooding-prone areas so that we don't restrict the amount of water we can move through that system. So, the community agreed to the adopt a street program, which was essentially a voluntary trash pickup. The HOA, or the Community Association, also made outreach to the schools in the area. We think a lot of the trash, or some of the trash, is coming from the schoolchildren not properly disposing of their, their garbage. And then we went out and we monitored the voluntary compliance program to see how much trash was left in the street. And, and what we found was unfortunately, that trash is still persisting. So, we're coming to your board today to look at, or to ask your approval to implement the no-parking restrictions. These are some examples of what we saw. This was taken during the voluntary trash reduction program. We actually took these photos in October. You can see some debris on Sullivan Avenue. This is Village Lane. This is Garden Lane, and obviously, you can see some of the photographs that we've taken in, in some of these areas. So, unfortunately, the voluntary program was not quite effective. The reason why we need to restrict parking is, is unfortunately, there is very limited parking in this area. Broadmoor is an unincorporated pocket within, fully surrounded by the city of Daly City. City of Daly City actually sweeps their streets weekly and has a very difficult problem with parking. Additionally, there is a shopping complex near this area. We heard from the residents that employees that work there park their cars in the neighborhood. So, we understand this is, this is a very difficult issue for the residents of the area. Unfortunately, in order for us to comply with the terms of the regional board's permit, we are recommending that we implement the no-parking restrictions. What we're looking to do is, on the first and third Mondays of the month, depending upon what side of the street, we're suggesting or recommending that we have no parking zones between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. So, once a month, we'll sleep, sweep one side of the street, and cars can park on the other. On the other third Monday of the month, we'll sweep the other side of the street and allow cars to park on the other side. And this map depicts what those first and third Mondays would look like. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have. Thank you.
Do you have questions? We have one speaker card. Would you like to hear from the speaker?
Who's going to enforce it? Broadmoor Police?
Broadmoor PD. Yes, sir.
Okay. Kathy Marketti? Kathy Marketti? Okay. That's the only speaker card that I had, so.
Maybe if I could just make a couple of comments. You know, obviously, we did everything we could to make this a voluntary program, and as always, you know, at the meetings, everybody was very insistent that they would do it, and we really thought it, it would work, and that, in fact, they would do that, but over time, we found that it just didn't work. And it is inconvenient. I have street sweeping on my block, and I, I've had many a ticket because I forget about it on Tuesdays, board meeting days, I might add. But anyway, I, I do think we have to be realistic with the fact that we will get fined if we don't meet requirements over time, and we have a lot of, as you saw, the percentages are quite steep as we move forward. And so, one thing I would just like to ask, if, through Broadmoor PD, and I don't know if they're willing to do this, but as we roll this out, can we maybe do it where, maybe tag the cars with sort of a courtesy note to let them know, you know, come next month, you know, this will become a ticket, and just, anything new like this, I think, is always hard for people to digest. It's, I mean, for me, I know it's every Tuesday because it's every single week, but first and third, people have to get used to putting that on their calendar, and I think the fact that it's 9 to 11, a lot of people go to work so they can park on the other side of the street. So, I think that does help the situation, but I'd like to see if we can just kind of, you know, give notice for the first, maybe the first month or two, so they can get used to it, and then after that, it's, it'll probably become routine. People will get it.
Through the President Supervisor Tissier, we will reach out to the Broadmoor PD and ask them to implement such a program.
And then I wonder, maybe six months, eight months from now, if you can come back and let us know how, how things are working, and if we're seeing that people are actually moving their cars and we're getting it done, and it's, because I, you know, the last thing I want to see is tons of citations, but at the same time, I really want the job to get done. So, I want to make sure that we can see what progress has been made.
We'd be happy to report back.
Just one, one comment, I just, I, I know we had a similar problem in North Fair Oaks, and there were a lot of citations. What happens to the revenue of the citations that go back to Broadmoor Police to help them enforce it?
I have a little bit of knowledge there. I know that a very small portion goes back to Broadmoor Police. It primarily goes to the state and the court system itself, but the revenue doesn't necessarily, a large portion of the, of the revenue does not go back.
It doesn't accrue to us, though. It'll go back to Broadmoor Police.
Correct. That, I should say, that's my understanding.
Okay. Action?
Yes. I'll go ahead and move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim, for your help.
Now, we'll go to item number eight. Jemega Meyer.
Good morning, Madam President, Supervisors, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. My name is Jemega Meyer. Today, I will briefly share with you our efforts since our last public meeting in December. Some slides coming up here. Wherein, you authorized our office to develop a work plan, timeline, and budget for a community choice aggregation program here in San Mateo County. In addition, you also authorized our office and our consultant to conduct a focused outreach effort to educate and engage staff, city managers, and city councils in San Mateo County. To that end, our presentation today will include progress and activities in the month of January and February. And also joining me today are our consultants, Lean Energy, Sean Marshall, and Seth Baruch. They will be sharing with you our overview and understanding of what is involved with the technical study and the proposed work plan, budget, and timeline. Regarding our outreach efforts, we focused on policymakers, their staff, and stakeholders. And with that, the goal of these efforts was to request a formal resolution or support, or support of an equivalent letter from a city manager from each city authorizing the county to obtain its electrical load data from PG&E. It's this information that is the foundation for the technical study in Phase 1. So, our outreach to the cities included three governmental organizations. There's a typo here. The three and the four are really interchanged or swapped out. So, we had three local government organization presentations, which included CKEG, the City Managers Association, and Council of Cities. We also conducted two workshops, each one half-day, in the northern part of San Mateo County in South San Francisco, and down south here in Redwood City at the Redwood City Council Chambers. We also provided presentations to city councils. We have also developed a database of our contacts for all of our notifications. We're currently working on our website that's in development, and we're seeking the assistance of a professional graphic artist to help us with that effort. And as you are, you will hear next, we've developed a work plan, a timeline, and a budget. And last, we have been responsive to community and press inquiries. So, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, our goal was to obtain a resolution or letter from each city. As of today, we have received 15 resolutions or letters from these cities, and the remaining five are pending with councils between tonight and March 2nd. We're very pleased with that, to say the least, and wanted to thank all the cities in San Mateo County for the numerous hours and effort their staff and councils have taken to provide us the documents we need to submit to PG&E. So, with that, I would like to turn our presentation over to Seth Baruch, who will discuss what is entailed in a technical study. Supervisor Tissier?
Quick, to the chair, just a quick question. You mentioned talking to communities, we talked to cities, and, you know, obviously, I've been at, was at the meeting where you presented to the cities. I did get an email yesterday from IBEW asking that they can have a discussion with us or with you, and I just wonder if they, when you say community, were they part of the discussion?
Yes, they've been involved and participated at the workshops, and in turn, I believe Supervisor Pine has reached out and to instigate a meeting here in the near future with them.
Okay, I just got it last night. I was just, I was trying to find it here.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're pleased.
They, it's particularly IBW 1245, who represents the transmission line workers. They did attend our Redwood City seminar, and, you know, we're, we have a ways to go yet, and we're going to have them be a part of the process all the way through.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure they were part of the community discussion.
Yes. Right. Okay, and with that, Seth will hear.
Thank you, everyone. It's good to see you all again. So, I am going just to very quickly talk about the technical study and why it's done and what it will tell us. The two existing programs in Marin and Sonoma County, both, they both undertook similar technical studies, and really, the And really, one of the key things that we need to know exactly, given that we think all cities will participate, what the overall size of the program will be in terms of energy requirements, megawatt-hours, and peak demand, so megawatts of capacity. It's very important, of course, for a community choice program to be able to provide all of the electricity needs for its customers 24/7, even on the hottest summer day. The, and it's also important also for compliance requirements. I'll get into that in a second. The technical study will forecast demand into the future, given historical trends in the county. So the Sonoma study, for example, looked at 10 years into the future. We want to know not just what the demand is today, but what it's likely to be a decade from now. We are, the technical study would also, and I think we're all interested in looking at the potential resource availability on the markets, both in terms of renewable energy capacity and local renewable energy potential that could be developed in and around the county. This is particularly relevant for the compliance issue in terms of complying with the Renewable Portfolio Standard, which all load-serving entities, including CCA, has to meet. And particularly in the light of a possibility that the RPS may go from the current 33% level by 2020 up to 50%, that's by 2030, that's been proposed, not yet in law yet. Also, the technical consultants, which would not be us, by the way, other people with a lot more technical backgrounds would come and do this, they would assess the ability to be rate competitive now and into the future, given short-term and long-term trends in the energy markets. Just as a point of comparison, both Marin and Sonoma, their CCA programs have been able to be competitive. Actually, they've been beating the rates of PG&E. No guarantee that'll happen indefinitely into perpetuity, but in 2014, both of those programs saved electricity consumers about $6 million each in each county. Finally, the technical study will review potential supply scenarios. So we want to look at not just what the baseline may be in terms of what the minimum amount of renewable energy or green energy that would be useful or valuable or required, but also scenarios that would be, that would go beyond that. So we will look at, the technical study, we look at power supply scenarios under different conditions, as well as their impact on greenhouse gases and potential jobs created. We know that creating local renewable resources creates local employment opportunities. The Marin County Program, which is a little bit longer in operation than in Sonoma, they have about 195 megawatts in the pipeline, have created, already created hundreds of jobs, many of them union jobs as well. And Sonoma has about 70 megawatts of new solar construction in the pipeline. So we, the technical study would look at that as well for San Mateo County. And finally, a robust risk analysis would be included, looking at what the potential risks are for a CCA so that the, all the decision, all of the decision-makers, both on the county and local levels, would understand exactly what they're likely to get into, what the risks are, and what the mitigation requirements would be to deal with those risks. So with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague, Sean.
Lots of talking heads today. Thanks for having us back. I'm just going to walk us through the final couple of slides to talk a little bit about the CCA formation timeline and what we see that can potentially work in San Mateo County. I will draw your attention to Phase One, which is where we currently stand today. This phase is aptly called pre-planning and due diligence. There's been quite a lot of pre-planning underway so far, since December, when we last saw you. A lot of that pre-planning is articulated in some of the attachments and more detailed documents that were included with the staff report. We've also begun the process of initial outreach and education, very specifically focused, as instructed, on outreach to local governments, staff, and decision-makers. And I want to just pause because Lean Energy works with communities all up and down the state. The San Mateo County effort, in terms of just the level of response from your cities, has been phenomenal in this relatively brief period of time. And it's not required that you have every community involved in your technical study, but it sure looks like you will in this county. And so I think that's something to be acknowledged here. The other piece for Phase One that will come, assuming that you approve the allocation to move forward with the technical study, is to form a CCA Steering Committee that would be comprised of local government representatives, various stakeholder groups that have interest and a stake in the outcome of what a program could look like in San Mateo County. So if Phase One is approved, it'll focus primarily on this technical study and getting your key questions answered, as well as some of the other structure around a program, should you decide to move forward into Phase Two and Phase Three. Right now, what we're looking at is a project work plan that brings you out to the fall or early winter of 2016 and contemplates a launch at that time. If we can move faster, we will. If we need to slow down, we will. I think a lot will really depend on your steering committee and also the robust public outreach that really is a key feature throughout all three phases of this project. So that's, that's the overall phasing. This Phase One slated to begin has already somewhat begun and would be completed by August, wherein staff would come back with the results of the technical study, any other updates, and then you would make a go-no-go decision based on those results to move into Phase Two. Uh-oh, what did I do here, people? Here we go. Next is just an overview of the proposed CCA formation budget. I will tell you that this was prepared, really, in cooperation with Marin Clean Energy, Sonoma Clean Power, and the City of Lancaster. We, one of the things that we know about CCA is that you really build on the shoulders and the experiences of the communities that have already done this. The good news is that there are beginnings of some very standardized methodologies, processes, documents, those sorts of things. So we're at a point now where communities coming onboard and looking at this don't need to reinvent the wheel. Certainly, with respect to certain ordinances, language, all of that can really be borrowed and tailored to meet the needs of your county. So what we put together here is an overall formation budget, should you choose to move forward, of 1.5 million. We think that's quite comfortable, likely to come in underneath, under that, certainly would strive for that. In this first phase, however, we're really asking for $300,000. The chunk of that, the bulk of that, going toward the CCA technical study, as described, a significant amount, 75,000, to continue on and broaden the stakeholder engagement that really has to begin to ramp up now. It really is, Phase Two is the hallmark, that's the hallmark of Phase Two. But there's some ramping up to expand beyond local governments to then now go to business community, the environmental concerns, labor definitely needs to be at the table, large energy users, educational research centers, and all of that. So there's a whole nother plan and process that goes on with respect to stakeholder engagement and outreach. In the last category there, you'll see financing partners. What that really means is just a small amount of money to look at doing, looking locally at what your financial partner situation might be in terms of local banking institutions, an organization that might be interested in providing working capital and ongoing credit to the JPA once it gets formed. It's just a small amount of money at this point, just to begin those conversations, should you decide to move forward. Last but not least, I'll just recap quickly. March is just around the corner. So should you decide to approve this, the last cities will be having their city council meetings and hopefully releasing, authorizing the load data next week. That means that we could potentially get the request out to PG&E for the load data request next week or the following week. That load data typically takes about eight to 12 weeks to come back. At that point, going on sort of on parallel, the RFP would be released for the technical consultant to get the technical study underway. The steering committee would also, that process would commence to bring the steering committee together. So there are a number of things that happen here in the next 30 to 120 days that are operating on a kind of a parallel universe, with the goal of having that technical study complete, the steering committee in place, other Phase Two planning documents queued up for you by August, so that then you really do have a more robust set of materials and decision points to go on into the next phase and the next funding allocation. So that is a very fast update as to where we've been and what is the request for today. Happy to take any, this is the recommendation that's before you, is a transfer of 300,000 to basically cover the activities of Phase One project. And now, we will just see if there are any questions related to the appendix slides or anything else.
Just had, well, maybe a couple of questions. The gentleman indicated that there were power supplies being built. Is that, the CCAs are building power supplies?
So, right now, the CCAs themselves, Marin and Sonoma being the two operational ones, they're in the process of getting their credit ratings. So they are cosponsoring, and Marin in particular, is cosponsoring a project. For example, there's one in the City of Richmond at the Chevron refinery, 10.5-megawatt solar project. It'll cosponsor that project with Chevron and a private solar developer, so that CCA ultimately owns the project, but the private solar developer gets to take the investment tax credit and transfer the asset to the CCA after that seven-year period. So there's a lot of that kind of innovative co-development going on right now.
And just one other comment is that, well, actually, for the CMO's office, well, I am supportive of doing this. I don't think it ought to come out of Measure A money. I think it ought to be personally, general fund or EREF reserves.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, go ahead.
I was just going to make a point on the, on the funding. Should we proceed and launch and the CCA ultimately will be able to recoup these funds through the, through the rate payer payments. So, you know, right now, our risk is relatively modest, the 300,000. And then we'll kind of make, when we make the go-no-go decision, then, you know, we have to spend these additional funds. But in the scenario that I hope to see happen, that we'll get this up and running and we'll recoup all the money. So in some ways, it's a loan, but whether it comes from A or EREF, I don't have a strong feeling for this kind of...
Good reminder, thank you.
Mr. Malby, just a follow-up question, tagging on to what Supervisor Horsley asked about. I'm supportive of the program, but I'm curious how the logic is of ostensibly jumping ahead of the Measure A requests that are in the binder that we got, and how we justify moving Measure A money to this project, which now goes sort of at the top of the, top of the list.
Through the President to the Board. This had been discussed really at the early point of the Measure A process. We'd identified Measure A as being one possible source of funds, and that's why it has remained in Measure A. As I mentioned to Supervisor Horsley, any source of funds that the Board has at its disposal would be appropriate to fund this with. And if the Board doesn't feel Measure A is appropriate, then we would simply take it out of existing reserves, if that be your choice.
Thank you.
No, I was going to say, I might have some comments, but maybe we want to hear the speakers? Do we have?
Yes, we have a number of public speakers. Beginning with Parid Gupta.
Good morning, President Groom, and members of the Board of Supervisors, Dave Pine, Warren Slocum, Adrian Tissier, Don Horsley, and Mr. Malby and Mr. Byers. I'm Pradeep Gupta, Council Member from the City of South San Francisco. And I'm just here to add my encouragement to the Board to approve this step. I think it's in the right direction. And I'm looking forward to working with the county staff, as well as the team you put together, in how we in South San Francisco can participate and make it happen. Just to give you a little bit of news recently on the renewal projects, private industry is jumping into it with both feet. Recently, I read in San Francisco Business Chronicle that Apple is investing $848 million on a contractual basis to buy solar power for 25 years to the tune of 130 megawatts. And they have put that money in, and it's agreed upon. Google is putting 1 point, more than $1 billion, in trying to get renewable energy sources as part of their future expansion, not only in this country, but also in Ireland and Denmark. They are working with wind energy, et cetera. So I feel that this is the right step in the right direction towards sustainability, especially because these kind of renewable resources will be replacing our coal plants, our oil plants, our gas plants. And in the future, we can see cleaner air and environmental protection, which has its consequences, as we all know about. So I'm just here to add my encouragement, strong encouragement, to the Board. Secondly, I'd like to give commendation to the workshop that was held with the assistance of county supervisors and the staff in our South San Francisco. I think it was very well done, and we really appreciate that help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Nice to hear from you.
And I should point out that South City was the very first city to release its load data.
Natalie Minios.
Good afternoon, President and Board Members. My name is Natalie. I represent the City of Brisbane. I'm a management analyst, and I've been to these informational meetings. And Brisbane personally is very excited about implementing CCA. And so we are in support of allocating these funds to move forward with the Phase One. And as far as turning in our letter and accessing our load data, we have turned in that letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Clausen.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the Board. My name is Michael Clausen. I'm a resident of Mamaw Park. I'm a member of a new group, this forum called San Mateo Community Choice, to advocate for community choice energy in San Mateo County, and also a consultant part-time with the Center for Climate Protection in Santa Rosa. And I am here to encourage you to allocate the funds to pursue this technical study. We think that it's an idea whose time has come. Global warming and climate change are already upon us. It's an enormous threat. It's very important for localities, local cities and counties, to step up to the plate and start addressing, figuring out ways that they can address reducing their carbon emissions. Last year, I did a study for the Sierra Club, looking at what cities and counties in Silicon Valley were doing to combat climate change. We found that quite a bit is going on. I concluded that essentially, the glass was half-full. There's a lot of good work going on, a lot more that needs to be done. And we recommended that cities take on game-changing projects. And there's nothing better, as far as we're concerned, than community choice energy is a game-changing project to really significantly reduce carbon emissions and do it essentially painlessly to the cities involved. And of course, the advantages are not only reducing emissions, but providing electricity at cost-competitive rates, and also, hopefully, having surpluses to invest in energy efficiency and a lot of other good projects that can reduce carbon emissions. So I heartily endorse this. I encourage you to step, move ahead and hope that a year from now, we can celebrate an implementation of a project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clausen. Gladwin D'Souza.
Good afternoon, President Groom and members of the Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County. I'm Gladwin D'Souza, and I live in Belmont, and I'm also a member of the San Mateo Community Choice. And I want to thank the Board for all the efforts it's done. It's put San Mateo County on the map for what's happening with community choice aggregation in the Bay Area. And we are getting calls from the East Bay and from San Francisco to find out how we've been able to move forward so quickly, and it's all due to the efforts that you have put into this item. So thank you, and thank you to the Office of Sustainability under Director Egomeyer, because they've done a really good job with outreach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Souza. Christian Andrew Schwinn.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kirsten Andrew Schwinn. I'm a co-founder of the Local Clean Energy Alliance. It's a regional-wide alliance of community organizations that support local governments in implementing community choice energy programs. I'm also a resident of Pacifica and active with the Pacifica Climate Action Coalition, which is supporting our city in implementing our climate action... which is supporting our city in implementing our climate action plan. And we're very interested in seeing this move forward. I want to congratulate you in moving this far ahead and urge you to continue moving on with this project. It's absolutely wonderful. It's moving so smoothly in San Mateo County. Marin and Sonoma County have really shown the way. It's not that difficult for counties to do now. They found it to be successful, to be financially successful. I also want to urge the county to establish some very clear goals for the technical study and to work with the Advisory Committee on that. In order to do a project like this, we need to know what are, why we're doing it. Why are, you know, what are our real goals to meet, to build renewables? Are we, do we want to build them here in the county? Do we want to go past what the state is likely to do? And I think that makes sense. And to make sure we know where we're going before we commission that technical study. There's so much that we can do to harness the energy of the business community here in San Mateo County, to cover parking lots and brownfields in the county with solar panels, to generate that business activity here in the county, to really know where that renewable energy is coming from. So, again, want to urge the county to work with Advisory Council, with some of these wonderful members of the community here that are interested in this project, to set some really strong goals for that technical study, to make sure that we're studying a project that we actually really want to implement for some clear goals for the county. Again, congratulations and really urge you to move forward on this wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. Bruce Carney.
Hello, Madam President, members of the Board. My name is Bruce Carney. I had the good fortune to be one of SolarCity's earliest employees. When the company had fewer than 100 employees, the entire operation was about the size of this room. As I'm sure all of you know, SolarCity is now one of the crown jewels of San Mateo County's renewable energy industry with more than 7,000 employees in the United States. Its headquarters on the top of the hill in San Mateo are bursting at the seams. The reason I mention this, and by the way, I'm retired from the solar industry at this stage in my life, the reason I mention this is I think that the employment benefits of the wind and solar and renewable energy industry are often overlooked because they don't make consumer products. They're not like an iPhone manufacturer. However, all of the jobs that they create are in the United States, are in the localities where the systems are integrated. And so, I'm extremely excited to be here to hopefully watch the adoption of this ordinance and hope that will have a ripple effect into Santa Clara County, where I live and where I'm a member of Carbon-Free Mountain View, which has been working for the last year and a half to get Mountain View, Sunnyvale, Los Altos, and Cupertino to do exactly what you're preparing to do today. There are really so few outstanding ideas in the field of environmental protection that I think it's wonderful that you're taking the leadership here, and I expect that if you do that, others around the Bay and around California will follow fast on your heels. I think San Mateo County is what we used to call in marketing a credible reference account, unlike Marin County, which unfortunately has the reputation of being a little bit too far out on the edge. So, I really look forward to what I hope you're about to do today. Thank you very much for your forward thinking.
Thank you. Anya Miller.
Madam President, Board of Supervisors, I really expect to really congratulate you on your effort here. I'm a citizen of Brisbane and former councilmember there, and now I'm involved with the CREBOL, which is Committee for Renewable Energy in the Baylands. I have a brochure for you. We have been working for nine years now to plan, land use planning, to allow for renewable energy, large solar farms and wind power on a brownfield that is called Baylands, but it's really a bay fill, totally unregulated garbage dump. And we felt that this would be a very good place to have renewable energy. And now, with your wonderful effort and successful effort to put the cities together and work together in a wonderful way, it just makes us feel that all this work, all these years, may finally be implemented through a measure like this community choice. And I am just very proud of this. I've had the honor of serving your previous Board as Chair of Citizen Advisory Committee on County Parks. That was several decades ago. But, it just, being involved with what you're doing and your leadership is just absolutely wonderful, and I support this effort to do the feasibility study and move on with this really desirable project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. Jan Butz.
My name is Jan Butz. I live in Menlo Park, and I'm also a member of the San Mateo Community Choice Group advocating for CCA, a community choice aggregation. And I have to say, I am really astounded, proud, and delighted how quickly this effort has come together, how well your staff and your consultants have prepared this, and just thrilled with the progress that has been made to date. I can't think of a more effective way for a geographic area to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and also give us local control of our energy policies for the future and save money for the county's households and businesses in the bargain. I also just want to put out the thought, too, that we already see, as CCAs have taken off in different areas in the states, that it's pressuring PG&E. So, our indirect effect as well is that PG&E is moving toward more renewable sources of energy. So, that affects the whole customer base of PG&E. So, consider that as you take the step to endorse this next step, that we're really pushing in a wonderful way for protecting our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Bonilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Being recently appointed to the San Mateo City Council, I need to point out that I'm not speaking on behalf of the Council today, but rather only on my own behalf. I've been following the issue of CCA rather closely now for a little over a year, when I first became aware of it. And it's gone through its trials and tribulations, but overall, it's something that is done very well, and I strongly support it. I think it's something that we don't know about until we at least do the feasibility study. Seems to be working in these other counties. That doesn't mean that something might not happen in the future, but if we don't at least study it, as with the earlier issue that you heard, then we don't really know. So, I would urge you to please approve the feasibility study. And I would like to say that when you're looking for people to be on the steering committee to work on it, I would like to volunteer. Thanks.
Thank you. That's our last speaker card on this item, so we'll bring it back here for Supervisor Pine.
Well, it's exciting to take a moment to think about how much we've accomplished in such a short time, and, you know, my hat's off to the Office of Sustainability and our really capable consulting team. There's no question that we can't act fast enough to reduce our carbon emissions, and we've learned in this outreach process that there's a real hunger among our cities and among our citizens to do their part to reduce the carbon footprint. And what's exciting about the CCA is it's such a powerful mechanism to do that. So far, it's worked well in other jurisdictions, doesn't require taxpayer funding, and it has this fundamental element of choice, of course. Consumers can choose how much renewable they want. The JPA that would govern this entity, should it be approved, would make choices between the renewable, how much renewable and at what rates. And then, you know, downstream, the idea of local generation is, of course, very exciting. And, you know, in particular, there would seem to be some real opportunities at Baylands in that there's already momentum there to install renewable energy generation systems, and that could be a great source of local energy for the CCA. So, again, very excited by the support we've received about the pace at which we're moving, and the study will allow us to look with real precision as to, you know, the assumptions we've been talking about. So, again, very pleased and very grateful for everyone who's contributed thus far.
Supervisor Horstly?
Just one, well, first of all, I'd like to commend Supervisor Pine and his leadership for this, and I was really glad that the man from SolarCity came, because I just got a new roof and I signed a contract with them. So, you'll be happy, and now I'm gonna put solar on my roof. And I did read the literature that indicated that even though you have solar on your roof, you still can be part of the CCA. So, I'm certainly supportive of this. I do think that it should be out of EREF reserves only because, you know, you look at Measure A, we really, we identified a whole series of services. Most of them have, you know, performance measures. I noticed that money would come back, so one way or the other. I mean, I'll vote for it one way or the other, whether it's Measure, whether it's Measure A or General Fund or whatever, but I just do think it's, I think it's cleaner if it goes through EREF reserves.
Prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the funding of the feasibility study and use our EREF reserves for that purpose.
I'll second it.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. We will go to item number nine, accept the San Mateo County Measure A Oversight Committee Annual Report. Ms. Veralis.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Malby, Mr. Byers. First, I want to acknowledge our two Oversight Committee members who are here today, Ms. Lynn Shabunka and Mr. Sam Hutkins. Thank you for your patience, and I will be brief. As part of the Measure A passage, there was a requirement to create an audit committee or an oversight committee for the spending of Measure A funds. The Oversight Committee was assembled in July of 2013, and they've met several times. The primary charge of the Oversight Committee is to audit the annual receipts of Measure A and then also to develop recommendations around performance measures for existing Measure A initiatives. So, the report is attached. The Controller's Office has completed its audit. So, for fiscal year 2013-14, so ending June 30th, 2014, we received $80 million, approximately $80 million of Measure A funds. We've spent $24 million of that so far on existing initiatives, and will continue to spend down those funds and maintain a reserve. There is also a work group that the Oversight Committee created to take a look at performance measures for existing initiatives, and the recommendations of the committee has been included in the packet. And we're working with our county departments to get those in the Measure A dashboard as well. So, that concludes our report. Again, I want to thank our Oversight Committee members who are here and the eight others for their service this past year.
Supervisor CCA.
Raina, just a quick question, so I'm clear on this. On some of these, you have the original performance measures, and then you have the Oversight Committee recommendations. Are you, if you have a new recommendation, are you completely eliminating the original performance measures? I mean, at the end of the day, is it only what's been in the column recommended by the Oversight Committee? Obviously, if it says no change, that means you stay with that one. But there are a couple where it looked like you could measure it, that the Oversight said, but there might be something from the original that might have some merit.
Okay. Through the President, Supervisor Tissier, we made it clear that if we, if we were to change it out altogether, that it would be under the Oversight Committee recommendations? And if there was no change, we indicated no change. Were there any particular measures you wanted to continue?
Well, you know, when I looked at it last night, I had a couple of quick questions. Now, of course, I didn't work them. Maybe I'll, I can talk offline. It's nothing that's gonna affect necessarily. I was just curious, if it's, if it's in the column with no change, you take the one from the original one?
That's correct.
If you've made any changes, that's where you're going now.
That's correct.
Okay. If, maybe I'll take a harder look this afternoon, if I have anyone that I, it wouldn't make a substantial change anyway.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else? So, how about a...
I'll move to accept the Measure A Oversight Committee's annual report, and I do thank the members that are here, one happens to be mine.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you again, Raina. I'm sorry, Mr. Fox, I didn't, please, please come forward. I apologize for not picking this up in time.
Thank you very much, President Grum, because I did volunteer to the Chairman of the Measure A Oversight Committee to participate. In one of the subjects that Supervisor Tissier noticed had become completely eliminated. As a matter of fact, you'll notice the elimination on the very first page of Attachment B. The County Manager's Office is recommending the elimination of the Mental Health Respite Center performance measure. The Mental Health Respite Center proposal was approved by the Board on July 23rd, 2013. And elimination of the performance measure for the Respite Center, I believe, shows that it's something that people don't understand and won't work. And so, if you're going to eliminate the performance measure, please eliminate the multimillion-dollar appropriation you have for establishing the Respite Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Okay, we made a motion, and we've approved this, and we'll move on. Okay. Item number 10, our legislative report.
Madam President, members of the Board, as Ms. Waris Dural comes forward, the report that you have really is last year's program that has been highlighted with changes that we're proposing this year. Probably in the interest of time, if Board members have comments on those changes or something that's not part of it, you should address that.
Well, thank you, President Grum. I just had a couple of comments, and one of, under Health and Hospitals, it's, there's item number three, four, and six are advocating taxes on sugary drinks, cigarettes, and alcohol. And, you know, I certainly don't mind tax, increasing taxes on alcohol, especially at the state level, but, you know, what I'd like to see us, instead of taxing people for their bad choices, you know, sort of punishing them for their bad choices, can't we find something more positive as opposed to constantly looking at a tax? And the other thing is that, one of the things that I, you know, Supervisor Grum and I have worked on with the healthcare districts is trying to get them to have responsibility for indigent care. So, I would want to add, under Health and Hospitals, you know, continuation to pursue legislation to require healthcare districts to have shared responsibility for indigent care in their communities.
Absolutely.
Other than that, no comments.
Okay. I, go ahead, Supervisor.
I would just add a comment on the sugary drink tax. You know, I would be personally supportive of an effort at the state level to do that. So, you know, maybe what we should, probably we should take it out of the document, and should a bill make any progress, bring it back to the full Board for discussion. Yeah.
I'm not in favor of us taking on a sugar tax either. I think it has to be done statewide if it's going to exist. And I support Supervisor Horstly's recommendation on the healthcare districts. Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing, Connie?
Just to say that I'll make the necessary changes, just to, the county, in addition to what's listed in the Priority section, will be pursuing a couple of bills, one dealing with the La Honda Fire Brigade and their, their taxes on their fundraisers. We're also looking to work with Alameda County on a solid waste management fee bill, as that's a diminishing source of revenue for public works, and also with, on the assessment of certified aircraft. The bill that had previously put together an agreement on that particular tax is sunsetting, and so Senator Hill is looking to enact new legislation in that area. So, we will be working on those bills as well.
Thank you for all the work you do with our local legislators and with the, all the associations in Sacramento. I know it's not always easy.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox, you had a comment?
Good morning again, President Grum and members of the Board. Thank you for your service to the county. I want to thank the County Manager's Office for adding that the county supports alternatives to incarceration for people with mental illness to the list of public safety and justice issues on page 19. issues on page 19 of the 2015 legislative program. Please vote to support passage of California Assembly Bill 59 and the Helping Families in Mental Health Crisis Act when it is introduced into the current session of Congress. Assisted outpatient treatment known as Laura's Law in California was approved by the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, as an effective, efficient, and humane hospitalization and incarceration recidivism reduction program in March of 2012. AB 59 was introduced into the current session by legislative session in Sacramento by Assembly woman Waldron just last month, and it would expand the reach of Laura's Law beyond the counties which have already voted to implement it to cover the entire state. The Helping Families in Mental Health Crisis Act would not only encourage states to adopt assisted outpatient treatment laws, but would also facilitate clinical information sharing between first responding agencies. Please to vote, vote to support passage of the California Assembly Bill 59 and the Helping Families in Mental Health Crisis Act when it is introduced into the current session of Congress. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fox. Can I have a motion to adopt a resolution?
Just one quick question. It just struck me. I just want, maybe if Connie can explain, I'm not quite sure what this means. It's on page 18, and it's under Public Safety and Justice, says policies that help it better, make it better, I guess, to implement Prop 47 as well as mitigate local criminal justice impacts.
Number 10?
Number 10, I'm sorry.
Number 10.
I mean, I know what Prop 47 is, and I know it's being implemented, and we're working on that. I guess the part as well is mitigate local criminal justice impacts.
Wouldn't one of those be potentially the issue with the DNA, for example?
Right. There are a number of, of cleanup issues that locals are finding have to occur. That's just broad language to be able to look at those individually and take action.
I don't have a problem. I just, I didn't quite understand it.
Right. That's what that refers to.
All right.
Mr. Malby?
Madam President, I believe the appropriate motion might be to adopt a resolution approving the 2015 legislative program as revised.
As revised. Okay. Motion to that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Now, we're going to go to the County Manager's Report, number 11.
As is given your custom, given the hour, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
We're going to start putting you first.
Okay. We'll do that next week. How about?
We'll give you two minutes.
Board, Board Member Reports. Who would like to begin? Supervisor Horsley?
Last Thursday, I attended a, it's called, it's a, I can't, one of the acronyms I can't figure out, but it's CHARGES, it's Annual Conference on Sea Level Rise, Extreme Weather, and Regulatory Hurdle as a New Challenge for Flood Protection. I was probably the only elected official there, but the room was full of people, it had at least 100 people. Really interesting, learned all about atmospheric rivers. Never knew that any such thing existed, but interesting conference. The other, I want to adjourn in memory of John Oakes. He died Wednesday, February 18th, in Redwood City, 79 years of age. Lived in Redwood City for 45 years. He was, his wife Ellie was a teacher at Roy Cloud School, actually one of my son's teachers. He, what was notable about him, though, was John Oakes was a longtime deputy DA, spent about 30 years in the District Attorney's Office. Before that, he was in the California State Deputy Attorney General's Office as well. He was mostly served in the Criminal Division, so that's kind of how I knew him. He was a great, as most of the attorneys in the DA's office are, a great trial attorney and a really nice man. And, and he handled all of the really major felony cases that the Sheriff's Department had in the 80s and early 90s. In any case, a good man and recently passed on.
Supervisor Tissier?
Yes, thank you. I have an adjourned memory for Fred Caciola. He was a longtime resident of Daly City who passed away on February 7th, 2015 after losing his battle with cancer. He was, went to Mission High in San Francisco where he was senior class president of the 1958 spring class. That's where he then met his wife Rose, and many of you remember her as a member of Mike Nevin's staff when he was here. They were together since high school. They were married in 1962. Fred and Rose were avid world travelers and also enjoyed vacations with their children. He had been enlisted in the US Army Reserve. He was also joined the Plumbers Union Local 38 where he's a proud union member for 56 years. He and his sons started Bayline Mechanical in 1992. He also served on the Daly City Parks and Rec Commission, was a member of the Monte Cristo Club, and a proud member of the Olympic Club. He is survived by his wife Rose, his mother Marie, his sons Kevin and Dan, and his grandchildren. And he will remain in our prayers.
Supervisor Pine?
I had one adjourned memory and one other comment. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Gamaro Rubica Sandoval and his son Louis Rubica. As you may have read, they embarked on a fishing expedition out of Oyster Point and sadly drowned. Louis, the young, the young man, was an explorer with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Post from 211 to 213. He graduated from the 73rd Law Enforcement Explorer Academy and had the honor of being the class president. He was scheduled to graduate from SF State University with a degree in criminal justice. He was instrumental, he was also instrumental member of the Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Post, and he was actually, he was buried in his Explorer uniform. So sad, very sad situation, our condolences to the family. And then I just, just one observation, you know, I made a remark earlier in the meeting about, you know, how I liked, one nice thing about being elected officials is you get to learn things. Another nice thing about being elected officials is if something happens, gets done, when things get done. So there's something here that got done that is attributable in part to the efforts of Supervisor Horsley and Supervisor Tissier. You know, there was this situation yesterday where at, at the local charter school in Redwood City, there was a balloon pop, but there was concern it was gunshots. And, you know, it was really a scary situation. The school went into lockdown, but it was, you know, fortunately, because of the work that's been done with the county emergency response protocols, you know, everybody was all over it. And, you know, thank God it was a balloon, but, so my, thanks to my colleagues for helping to push that.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. I guess it was a science experiment. They were doing a science experiment, yeah. I'd like to recognize Jordan, Jordan Fowler. Jordan Fowler, last week, she, she's a USC sophomore. She lives in Redwood Shores, and she was a 2013 Sequoia Award winner. And Jordan recently made history in her election as a student body vice president at USC on the first all-female ticket in Pac-12 history. And so we're proud of Jordan coming from Redwood Shores and being elected to vice president and congratulate her running mate, also whose name is Rini Sampath. As you all know, poetry is love. Contest is going on. If you haven't had a chance yet, look outside the District Four Office. There are some of the kids' poems posted up there. But so far, we've had 110 poems submitted, 56 from high school students and 20 from elementary school students, and we're still accepting those entries until February 28th, so keep those coming. And then I'd like to
True that Supervisor Horsley is working on one?
Yes. He did, he submitted one, yeah. It was one of the best, too, I might, I might say. Like to close, adjourn in memory of Ralph Nobles. I think probably all of you knew Ralph Nobles. And I think he was 93, actually. He was a brilliant nuclear physicist who actually worked on the Manhattan Project and personally witnessed the first nuclear bomb blast in New Mexico. He moved to the Bay Area from Los Alamos with his wife Carolyn Fisher, and they raised their two daughters here in Redwood City. And as we all know, he was a tireless advocate of civil rights and environmental issues, including the preservation of thousands of acres in the San Francisco Bay wetlands. And he was a Chair of the Redwood City Planning Commission at one time. Ralph is survived by his brother William Nobles. His daughters Elizabeth and Sarah, along with grandsons Benjamin, Daniel, and Scott, and one great-grandson, whose name is Sawyer.
Okay. We, 1:30 is Service Awards at 455 County Center. This meeting is adjourned.